Okay.
Just checking.
Are we good? Are we online?
Oh.
All right. I'd like to call this special meeting to order.
Test.
It is 9:32 a.m. on Saturday, October 22nd. This is a special meeting. We do have a full quorum of council present, and I have asked Patsy Morris to please do an invocation for us.
Holy and gracious God, we are so grateful for this day, for all the blessings that you have showered upon us and all those that you will continue to shower upon us. Father, we thank you for this community. We thank you for those folks who step up and are willing to spend their time to help make this community a better place. We ask you, Father, to be with us so that we may seek and do your will at all times. Be with those, Father, who are in special need of your love and grace and your presence. Thanks again, God, for this day. Forgive us when we fail you. Help us to do better. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to say amen.
We are so well-trained.
Just didn't get it to see.
All right. This special meeting has been called because our Public Works Coordinator, David Marshall, has found a truck that he is interested in for our Public Works Department, and he passed out information to council members the other night, photographs and whatever, and now he's going to give us detailed information. And so, David, you're on.
We don't want to make this as short. This is possible.
Yeah, let's see David short.
Do we need our books?
No.
Binders, binders. Get the binders.
Yeah, exactly.
Did you update our binders yet?
Not yet. Okay. Last night, I received a message from Councilman Harrington, who remembered and sent me a text. Can you provide a detail of the flatbed that is to be used for how, or for now, how?
I may have fat-fingered it, sorry.
That's okay. It will be a direct benefit to the Public Works, how it will be a benefit to the Public Works, and if purchasing this vehicle will result in any direct savings. So, that kind of helped me put this together. First thing I want to say is we have been searching for this vehicle four months plus. They're very hard to find. They're very much in want, and when they come up, Kathy, as you can attest, we've lost several in the past. They sell very, very quickly. To begin, I just want to say, everything that we ask for, it's Public Works, and everything we do for the Public Works is simply in the name of progress so we can do a better job and serve our customers more. First of all, CDL is not required for this particular vehicle. Anybody in the crew can operate this vehicle at any time. Currently, keep in mind throughout this, we only have one CDL employee driver. That puts a little bit of a burden on us. He asked me about the use. It's a three-yard dump truck. Also can be used as a flatbed. Also can be used to haul the water tank. And, most importantly, can serve as a second all-weather work truck. We currently have one. That is a negative in a way, because a lot of times, we need that type or style of truck over here when they're working over here. So, it would definitely benefit us in that direction. Use the flatbed for hauling. Would also make the perfect patch truck, which is what they were designed for. At least at Text Dot, that's what they used them for. It's easier, it's faster, easier to load, easier to unload when they start getting low instead of having to crawl in and reach over. They can simply tilt the gate, slides to the back, and it's right at waist level. Will also serve as an extra dump truck for spreading materials, such as the SPM mix, an extra dump truck for spreading sand in freezing weather. We can have two over here, two over here. Gets it done. As far as the direct savings, David, I'd like you to look at direct savings, not only in dollars and cents, but also in our ability to provide the service our citizens have come to expect and deserve. One where it can be a boon, installing a culvert immediately becomes a one-man job. This vehicle can haul the mini on the haul trailer behind it to the job site with the culvert or culverts to be installed. At the job site, one man can unload the culvert or culverts, dig the ditch, load the ditch dirt, haul it off, load the new material for the culvert, and return to the job site. One man, not two. Presently, we have to interrupt or postpone any spreading or grading operation that we have because our fantastic grader operator is also our only CDL driver. So, when we have to take the big dump truck over there, that takes him off of grading and spreading this material or any material.
And for clarification, we have to use the dump truck that we presently have, which requires CDL, in order to haul off the ditched dirt that's excavated.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
And bring the new stuff back out to cover the culvert with. Instead of two men working on the same project, we would now be able to have two men working and completing on two separate projects. Work faster, work smarter. Presently, we have our grader operator loading the six-yard dump truck, tailgating material onto the roads, which he does until about noon, and then he comes back and gets the grader and does that. He also is a one-man show. Grateful to have him. With the addition of this vehicle, we can now have two dump trucks spreading material in tandem. While one's coming back unloaded, the other one can be headed to the same job site loaded at the same time. This obviously gives us the ability to put out more material much faster, which equates to more roads being completed faster than ever before. We can also haul more ash material from the pellet mill in a day using the same technique. Two trucks, when they come back, they're perfectly capable and do this all the time. They load their own trucks and get gone. We have two trucks running. That would equate to, a normal day, we pick up 42 tons. With the addition of this truck, we could pick up an extra 21 tons, possibly more. That equates to a difference in the SPM material of about 126 tons compared to 189 tons that we could get. More material, faster. I think that would end up absolute direct savings.
So, we're talking about anywhere where the other dump truck would be used. If we're running in tandem, we have a 50% increase in capacity. So, that's reduced time, more volume of material, both collected and spread.
Right.
So, this is a 50% increase in efficiency.
The big one's a six-yard. This one's a three. But, yeah, somewhere along those lines. Would also give us the ability to have two crews spreading sand in different locations at the same time during a freeze operation. This would cut overtime expense because we could get it done quicker. We've tried the haul truck, or excuse me, the haul trailer. Ended up in a ditch during the big freeze, twice.
On that note, not to pull you off, the haul trailer, what's the capacity on that?
At its age and its condition, about a yard and a half to two yards.
Okay. So, is that a, could that trailer be pulled behind this new truck as well to increase capacity from three yards to four and a half?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Absolutely. The flatbed part of this truck, because it is a multi-use vehicle, y'all seen the pictures, you know what it's capable of. It's able to haul 500-gallon water tank and still have the haul trailer available for use. We had talked about putting the water tank on the haul trailer. That ties up that for us to haul the mini or anything else we might need at that time. Carrying capacity of that year model 350 is like 4,600 and some odd pounds. 500 gallons of water at 8.34 pounds per gallon comes out to about 41. So, we've got room to spare and can do it safely. I think one of the most important, this year, we were without our six-yard truck for one month. Two separate occasions, but both of them were two weeks. It was down due to needed repairs. This created a major slowdown in our operation, and certain jobs had to be postponed. So, we lost our continuity there. If we had this type of vehicle, we would be able to stay on time, on schedule, to once again provide the service our citizens expect and deserve. Okay. How's that? Can you see me now?
Do we need to fix your makeup?
Comb my hair, too. In closing, can you imagine that? I would like to add that the conveyor system that we have previously discussed to help us with road edges and spreading sand and so forth, to fit our six-yard, they also make one that fits this three-yard at a much, much reduced price, approximately half of what we were looking at. So, it could definitely benefit us there. It's also much smaller, easier to maneuver, so we can get it in places that we would normally have to twist and tangle and fight and close a road down. Same thing with any road edge repair, where we have to negotiate the truck sometimes across the road. This one, we could pull up, remove whichever side we need to be working off of, and people could still go around, and traffic could continue the way that it should. In a nutshell, this purchase of the vehicle would allow us to do our job better and faster. I will now take your questions.
Mr. Marshall.
I knew that was coming.
We talked yesterday.
Yes, we did.
If I can bring out one point that you may have forgotten to mention.
Okay.
About the arrows?
Yes. This truck was used previously in Utah. It was used as a city truck, and they had an arrow board on the back, excuse me, on the top of the headache rack. And an arrow board is simply a light that has an arrow over here, over here, facing opposite directions to help direct the traffic around you so everybody stays safe. It still has the controller in it. It is still wired to that. He had removed the arrow board, but he thinks, and he is desperately looking for it, that he still has it. So, if so, that's great. We can mount it back on there, and everybody'd be a whole lot safer, and they can see us ahead of time, well before they get there. You asked me a question yesterday about, have we looked at the Blue Book value? I spent hours last night trying to find Kelly Blue Book. It always took me to another site, wouldn't give me the, it's not what Kelly Blue Book used to be. I did go back through my records. I did get on several websites for these particular trucks. Again, I know the age is there, but the truck is in great condition from what I've been told, from the pictures I've seen. When we go down, hopefully Tuesday to look at this, we're going to spend some time going over this, driving it, and looking at everything to make sure it's exactly what the gentleman said it was. 105,000 miles. It is a 1997. It is very clean. You saw in your notes, replaced all-new tires, new shocks, new starter, new alternator, and some other stuff that I can't remember now. So, the truck, I believe, is in excellent shape.
Is it diesel?
Yes. Not only is it diesel, but it is the world-famous 7.3 Power Stroke that is absolutely bulletproof.
Yep.
105,000 on diesel's not many miles.
It's just getting broken in.
That block's got 300,000 miles left on it.
Easy, easy. Yeah, easy, easy. What I did do was go and go through my records online and looked at vehicles comparable to this and uncomparable to this. I found a lot of 97s with 250,000 miles gasoline, absolutely ragged out. I found others that were close to this. They ranged in price anywhere from about $9,000 to $21,000 for the same year model, same type truck. That's the best I could do on your Blue Book thing in a short notice like that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Cost?
$13,500, and he is not budging on that price. I tried. You know I tried.
We always try, right?
He is not budging. He's been holding this for us for two weeks. That's it.
All right. Jackie said there's a couple of questions from online about this. I guess we could entertain those questions, right?
Sure.
Okay. First, we have Brandon Yarber. It says, "Having anyone working on the side of the road alone is a safety hazard for many reasons." So, he just made a comment. Then we have S.J., and I'm going to spell the last name, A.B.K.E.
Abkey.
Abkey, okay. It says, "What is the cost of the current vehicle," which I think you just answered.
Right.
"And is this current, is this cost currently included in the department's budget?"
We do have money in the budget, in the capital investment fund, the capital improvement fund. This would qualify under that, yes.
Then the next thing is, what is the cost of the board if it cannot be found?
Those are going to run somewhere in the neighborhood of approximately $400.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion from council to move forward with the purchase of this truck?
I'll make the motion to move forward with the purchase of this truck.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
Yes. C.D., what is the current balance on the capital improvements budget?
We don't have that yet. We can hit that after the town's do their work.
But last year's still had.
So, we don't have any number we can go off.
Well, that's.
Over $50,000, wasn't it?
No.
Okay. We have in the tax class general fund.
In the tax class general fund, which is pretty much the carryover after the mayor moved $50,000 yesterday into our general fund at Citizens State Bank for maintenance and operations for the next couple of months or so until we start seeing our tax revenue, there's going to be about $168,000 in that carryover account. So, that's a rough estimate, but close.
So, those funds could be used for the purchase of this truck?
Those have pretty much been set aside for any capital improvements that the council authorizes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions? And is there any, I mean, obviously, it's going to be under the condition that it's inspected by David and whomever goes over there and carefully looked at before we hand them the check. Okay. Any other questions, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, I'm signing a check right now. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Okay.
All right, we're on, CD or the?
Test, test.
CD. CD.
Good morning, everyone.
Red.
CD.
Could you give Patsy the microphone? I want to.
Patsy?
Again. Encore, encore. Just say ditto.
Okay, CD, is the recorder on? Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call this town hall meeting to order. It is 10:01 a.m. We're doing really good. It's Saturday, October 22nd, and we have a full quorum of council present. And I have asked Patsy Morris if she would please lead us in a invocation, and we'll follow it with a pledge of allegiance.
Holy and gracious God, we are gathered here today to help our community grow and to make decisions. And Father God, we're just grateful for those folks who are willing to spend their time and effort to improve this community. And we ask you to bless this community so that we might be an island of peace in an otherwise pretty conflicted world. We thank you for our blessings. Father God, we are very concerned about the weather in our world. We need some rain right now, so if it will be thy will, shower it upon us. We would be so grateful. Thank you, Father, for all your goodness. Forgive us where we fail you. Help us to always seek and do your will. Be with those, Father, who are in special need of your love and your grace and your presence. Thanks again for this day. Bless us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's wonderful to see such a great turnout today. Thank you, thank you, people. And are there any comments from the? We will be taking, this is a town hall meeting. This is your time. We're going to go over the different things that we feel there's been some confusion about, and I'll kind of explain what we're talking about, and then I'm going to ask for questions. What the guideline is pretty much come on up to the microphone. You introduce yourself, give your name, address, and you've got three minutes to talk. If there's a line, if, you know, we limit it to three minutes so that everybody has an opportunity. If the end of the line is, you know, if you want to get back on the end of the line, you can do that. But we're going to limit it that way for, you know, at least to start out with. Before we start, I want everybody to know there's an open house at the fire station today. Does everybody realize that we have a new fire station? And it's awesome, and the fire department has invited everybody over to an open house. It's, you know, come and go as you wish. It's from 10:00 to 2:00. They've already started cooking hot dogs, and so if all, if any, we can all go over there en masse and have a hot dog after we finish here. See, this is a good thing. And then I don't know if you noticed, on the way in, there's this free little library, this little outside the door here. It's a really cute little thing, and this was sponsored, this is sponsored by a group of retired railroad ladies, and it's a real cool idea, and they're going to have, they're going to have a little grand opening or whatever at 2:00 this afternoon. So anybody wants to be here, we'll go ahead and we'll be doing that. It's a, it's a nice concept, and they'll explain more about what that's about. All right, life is good, and we are blessed, and we're going to start talking, first of all, about taxes. That's, that's one that's of interest to everybody. I was not here, of course, when, when the tax rate for the public hearings and the tax rate was set. The mayor is responsible for coming up with a proposed tax rate and a budget. And that I did before we left. There was some confusion. Our tax assessor-collector had given us the wrong figures to start out with, and so the amount I based the budget on was in error. I did not change that. The, what they called in, okay, we got the no new revenue rate, which brings in exactly the amount that was brought in the year before. And then you've got the voter approval rate, which is the amount that you can go up without triggering an election. And they had the wrong voter approval rate. And so the voter approval rate they had originally given me was .605, and that's what I based it on. And it, the, the actual one was .6196. We stuck with, I didn't change the .605. What I did do before I left was I gave council the figures if we were to not have any raise in our taxes, if we were to go with the figure that I had, or if we went with the adjusted figure that the county assessor, tax assessor-collector gave us. The adopted one was the .605 that I had proposed in the beginning. I imagine most of you picked this up when you came in. This helps get it in perspective. Everybody knows that costs have gone crazy, and everything, costs have gone up for everybody across the line. We understand that. I think the spirit behind which we, which, with, behind which our council did adopt the .605 was the fact that we are going to be faced with, with higher costs. And this represents, for, for example, a person that has a $100,000 house, it would be an extra $20 a year. It's not a huge difference. It is a difference, but it's, it's not huge. And I think people, there's kind of a misunderstanding about this. What did happen, and this is another aspect of, of the taxes. We got reappraised on our property last year, our land value. So our values went up quite a bit, which means that our, the tax rate that they come up with as the no new revenue rate goes down. Last year, our, our total rate was 91 cents. That includes the interest and sinking. Does everybody understand what interest and sinking is? We have a $2 million bond, okay? And that was passed, I don't know how many years ago, five? Yeah, five years ago. And so you have an annual payment on that. And by law, you have to, I mean, you have to have a tax rate to cover that annual payment. That, you know, if you, if you commit to a debt, then you have to make sure that you pay it. So that's, that's, last year was 16 cents per hundred. This year, it's going to be 15 cents because values went up, so the rate went down. Then you got, so, so our total last year was .91 cents. This year, with the .605 and the, and the interest and sinking rate, which is .15, it comes to .75, it's 75 cents per hundred, basically. So our tax rate is going down about 16 cents, but our values did go up. So it's kind of complicated, and I'll tell you, when I first got in here, I didn't understand any of it. So don't feel bad if you don't understand it. If you, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. There's not one dumb question, okay? We're open for comments or questions. If anyone would like to ask them, please come to the microphone. This is your meeting, town hall meeting.
I hate being up here. Sarah Warren, 652 Charmaine Drive East. On the taxes, we had a budget workshop that was poorly attended, which a lot of our meetings are poorly attended, which is really sad, because everybody, whether you're in the IPOA, whether you're volunteering, whether you're up here on city council, everybody works hard. There's, but, you know, we're a huge community, and we have a lot of differences of opinions and a lot of voices that need to be heard. My suggestion is maybe a better way to start out in the future, it's just a suggestion, is that perhaps we have a town hall meeting as this instead of a budget workshop. Perhaps putting town hall meeting in front of those words instead of budget workshop.
Well, yeah, they call it a public hearing, and that's what we're required to call it, but that, that's a good idea, Sarah. I think, you know, people show up at a town hall meeting.
Yeah, budget workshop.
Well, budget workshop is the one thing that, that council gets together and looks line item for line item at the budget. But then you have public hearings, and that's where the public is supposed to come in and voice their opinion before a decision is made. You're absolutely right. I think it's a good idea. We can call it a town hall public meeting.
It's just a suggestion for the future.
You know, thank you.
Now it's done deal. Meetings are difficult for the working class. We need our voices heard. Trust me, y'all, I still work two jobs, volunteer. I know how hard it is to get to these meetings. This is the third one this week. I'm exhausted, but we need to make that effort as a community. In my opinion, the discussion about the budget now in this town hall meeting seems futile because it's a done deal.
We're not talking about the budget. We're talking about taxes.
Oh, that's right. We're talking about taxes. All right. Well, I wanted to, in reference to the taxes and that meeting, because I was in attendance for that meeting, David, I know that everybody needs money. Everybody needs money right now. Inflation has gotten crazy, and everybody's hurting. I, I listened to all the councilman arguments, and I understand that the council did not have the faith in David Marshall's, it appeared to me, that they did not have faith in David Marshall's opinion that he could work with a lower budget on the road materials, with some new materials that he had discovered that worked really well. He, he fought hard for that, and I appreciate that, David, and I'm sure everybody does. I think that council that voted for it was just scared that we were going to incur some extra cost through the year, and they want to make sure this city is up and running. That is to be commended too, but also, in my opinion, when you put somebody in, in a department head, then you have to honor their opinion and value it.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, and it's not only Public Works. And I appreciate what David is doing, especially with, with this material that we've, that he has found, because I'm not going to say we, he has found it, and it seems to be getting some great results. And like I say, I wasn't there at that meeting, but I understand that when I adjusted figures, and it was a last minute thing, what I did was just took off the road material budget, because that's the easiest to, I couldn't go through and redo a whole budget. But I just took it off there, and we, during the year, if it's necessary, we can do line item transfers. So I figured that we could do that. If we needed more, we could shuffle it around. But anyway, I do appreciate the comment, Sarah. If anybody else has any questions, and I do appreciate, David, you coming up and saying that you would be able to, to sacrifice in that area.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I, may I follow on to Ms. Warren's statements and respond a little bit with some additional suggestions?
Absolutely.
I know that historically, and again, I want to thank the community for understanding that the evolution of our city offices and the way that we function is evolving. I know that, I know that people sometimes say, you know, we've been up and running for 10, 12 years. That's a young city. That's a young organization, especially starting from a volunteer basis with virtually nothing but a leased office space over in the current association building and one city employee. So as we build this, this organization out and build the infrastructure to be able to provide services, we're constantly having to take in suggestions, identifying new opportunities for growth and development. And I think in, in budgeting, historically, what we've done is that the mayor has kind of taken on the preparation of proposed budgeting and everything on their own, not just you, but previous mayors as well. And we don't necessarily have a, a process that's evolving on, on that particular point. And I think that as we've grown, we now have a, a, a leadership and head in the, in the courts, in our Marshals Department, in Public Works, and I think it might be a really great idea both to take some pressure at budget season off of the mayor's seat, but also to get better quality of information for budgeting if those department heads actually pre-budget start doing planning work themselves within their departments. That way, we're not just taking a, a look backwards at the numbers that we've had, but we also have some strategic information from the department head that's planning for the future year, and they can take a look and make presentations to not only the, the mayor when the mayor is, is creating the budget for proposal, but they'll be able to speak independently to council and identify why some numbers are the way that they are, where they can trim, where they're going to need more. I just think that delegating some of that responsibility to the department heads, that we've, we've fought really hard to get into place and to develop the infrastructure, I think, I think that we would do well as a community and as a, as a council and organization to start leaning on those folks that have the knowledge.
Can I make a little comment here? I, the mayor is responsible for the budget, for, for proposing a budget. I do not do this by myself. Tommy and, and CD and I spent two days, full days, working on looking at past history numbers, where we were, and I, before I, before I sit down with, to work on a budget, I ask each of the department heads to submit what they request. David submitted his, his proposal. He wanted raises for his people. Terry submitted his department proposal. So I did get feedback from each department. I asked the dams, I asked Rusty to give me a proposal on what he was going to need for this coming year. So that we do do. Now, if, if we waited until council got together to sit down and work on a budget, it took us two days.
Sure.
So I have to come up with something that we can, and what we did at that workshop, after I, after we get these figures together, we get the workshop together, we went line item by line item, and all of us saw what it was. There was no controversy, no comment about that at that workshop. Then, then follow up, we do the public hearing, bring the public in. We can do, we can change things, and I think it was not a bad idea on, on our workshop to have our public, have our department heads there to explain what they've requested. We did, we did try to, we did give raises to people. We hadn't given raises in a long time, and we did do as requested by our department heads, not totally, because I ask people, ask for the moon. You probably won't get the moon, but, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to see what we can do for you. Okay? Anyway, go ahead.
Awesome. Well, thank, thank you so much for providing additional visibility that, that some amount of that work is going on, and, and we all know that there has been, simply from a standpoint of visibility and, and detail, further developing that process will, I think, provide additional quality and results. Just a suggestion, following on Ms. Warren's comments.
Okay. Any, are there any other comments from the, Debbie? Please introduce yourself, like, like we don't know you do.
Hi, Debbie Peterson, 492 Charmaine Drive East. This is something that I mentioned to Kathy a week or so ago, whatever you got back. I think something in the future is we, when they were talking about the, the tax rate, we saw 58 cents versus 75 cents. There was not the, from last year, you need to split out the tax rate, oh, you need to split out the tax rate from the previous year, from the, the interest and sinking, so we can see what that tax rate is, and then add whatever interest and sinking is that you want to propose for the current year. That way, there is a total all the way across from the 91 cents to the 75 cents of exactly where it came from.
Right.
So.
And, you know, Debbie, thank you, thank you. That's a good idea, and Debbie and I talked about this the other day, and, and that's a good point. It's really difficult to get this across so that people understand it. Like I say, I didn't understand all, how all this stuff worked in the beginning, but I really want to make it as clear as we can. We all do, so that people understand what's going on. Are there any other questions about this? But thank you, Debbie, for that suggestion. We have to make sure that we include the 15 cents in there. Oh, there are two online questions. Wonderful. Jackie?
Okay, we have S.J. Abkey. She's 1135 Robin Hood. She has a statement, and it says appraisal cost has gone up. Tax rate actually has gone down from the last year, even with the increase over a new, no new tax. And then she has FY 22 dash point 775 point FY 23 point 6196. That is a reduction.
Yeah, it went, it's, yeah, the tax rate has been.
And the rate.
Okay. And then the next thing, S.J. Abkey, she has a question and says, how will the council face increased costs and expenses while balancing the budget with only a slight increase in funds of $18,000 from last year's budget?
Right.
We work hard.
Well, I think, I think a lot of that is, is we, we have to get creative, and we have to start, you know, we, we went through our, our comprehensive plan this last year and adopted it in general terms, and I think one of the things that we discussed was taking out the goals and targets from that plan and beginning to develop forward-looking strategies that actually allow us to reach those targets and goals. And budget, of course, is fundamental. How do, how do we finance our, our plans for the future? And we'll have to get creative. We'll have to learn how to do inevitably more with.
We'll have to learn how to do inevitably more with less, but it's going to take identifying things ahead of time and putting our heads together to try and come up with creative solutions for financing.
Right. And another thing that occurred to me when we, these questions were being asked, TML, who is our insurer, the cost of TML, it's gone up, and it's gone up quite a bit. Those are things that, when you're sitting there with a budget, you look at last year's, well, you know it's going to go up, you don't know how much it's going to go up, but that expense is going up. The other thing that's gone up tremendously is our auditing and our accounting. We have, how many accounts right now? C.D., 10? 10? Bank accounts. When you get into all these grants, you have to keep all that money separate. You can't mix it with other money. So we end up having all these accounts, which brings the cost of auditing, and so we get money, it costs money. So that's another thing that's gone up tremendously, our cost of our auditor and accounting. So we have to look at that. How are we going to cover those additional costs? So like I say, if you really look at that point 605, it's not a tremendous increase for all of us. We all have to participate, but I can understand why the council members did decide to go ahead with that small increase. Like I say, I went there, didn't have a vote, and I wouldn't have a vote anyway. I'm only a tiebreaker vote. But is that, does that finish the discussion about taxes?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It is what it is. An increase is an increase. Everybody's hitting our pockets, but we have to, with this budget, and as tight as it is, we have to look at other sources that we might be able to bring revenue into the city, some creative things. And I mentioned this in our comprehensive plan. There's a lot of cities that do different things. Livingston has a hometown Christmas event that goes, funds go to the city. Huge. Jasper does a lot of things. We could look at other cities and maybe hold our own event that would bring dollars into the city that would be, that we could grow from year to year. Port Natus does the riverboat races. Can't tell you how many people go through that thing. So this, different ideas that we could do to maybe bring in some extra funds to our area. It had to be a community involvement as these things grow. Just throwing that out there. Maybe it could help.
Well, how about we actually, you know, we talk a lot about the challenges that we face, and we make suggestions and recommendations. How about we actually put something on the agenda and put together a workshop for future, you know, financial opportunities where we actually develop some of these ideas? You know, I remember back as a kid, there were always lots of things going on out here, and like you said, communities are all over the place figuring out how to capitalize on that and monetize it. And so maybe if we can get a few programs up and running over the next year, even small scale, that can be something that builds and would subsidize maybe next year, going with a no new revenue rate, because we've backfilled it with some creative ideas. But we'll have to get a, I think that we could put a workshop together and actually start discussing this early on in the fiscal year, and maybe get something up and running if we put our heads together.
We did, just, and that's, that's a good, I like that idea. Just to give you an example, because we do a lot of these events. We did one in Yorktown, Texas. We rolled in there, the town has 2,500 people. They had Zig Fest down there at one time, and the turnout for that weekend was 50,000 people in that little town. It's no longer that way now, but that's where they grew it to. Can you imagine 50,000 people out here putting money into the community?
Absolutely.
It'd be, and that's just one small town, 2,500, and let me tell you, it went for blocks.
Yep.
But anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir. Would you mind coming to the microphone and introducing yourself? Good to see you, by the way.
My name is Bill Geese. I live at, my property's 369 23rd Street. The question I got is, with the increased value of the properties, are they factored into the budget?
Yes. Yes. What we, what.
I find that hard with my property doubling its value to have a tax increase.
Yes, but that is taken into consideration. The first thing that we get from our tax collector-assessor, this, the appraiser gives the values, and then the tax assessor-collector gives us the rates based on the new value. Our value went up from 84 million, I think, to 97 million this year, and they reappraised all land value. My lot had not been reappraised, I think, since day one, and it went up 30-some thousand for just my lot, and.
See, that's a big, that's a nice increase in taxes right there.
Well, the tax rates, but see, but see, the tax rate did go down, because last year it was 91 cents, this year it's going to be 75 cents. So we went down 16 cents because.
My tax rate did go down.
So that's a very important point for everybody in the entire community to understand and acknowledge. The tax burden, the actual dollars that you are going to wind up paying relative to the new rate, which we've clarified a number of times, the rate has come down, but some people's property values have gone up. Some people's property values may or may not have gone up, so it's.
If you have a structure, too, that makes a difference.
Yeah.
Because that'll change the value.
It's going to be different for every single property owner.
Yeah. Let's not talk over each other.
Okay.
Let's take turns so everybody can hear.
My point is simply that it's going to be different for every single property owner out here. If you only own raw land, and this is part of a larger problem that's not a creation of the city, but rather the county tax appraisal office, they're having to go through and do a cleanup, because honestly, they haven't maintained their valuation well over the last 30 years or so. And I know that, because when I came into office, I worked with David Luther down there, and I saw how depressed the raw land values are. So if you had a lot that was valued at $2,500 and has been for the last 25 years, and suddenly they bring you up to market value at $5,000, well, your tax burden just doubled. And that'll be different if it's got a structure on it, and it's going to be different for every single person. So the amount or percentage that your tax burden goes up is relative to what type of property that you have and whether or not it has a structure on it. So different people are going to be hit in different ways because of the type of property that they own, but it's a byproduct of that new valuation and the county catching up on their bookkeeping and catching up and cleaning up on their valuations. This is a very painful time for everybody. My house has gone up almost 80 percent, my property, almost 80 percent in valuation over the last four years. But hopefully, what we'll see is in the next year or two, and I'm going to chat with David Luther on this as well, what their strategy is for future valuations. I'm hoping that they've gone through all the steps. They've done raw land value twice now, I believe. They did a catch-up on the structures and improvements. So hopefully, we're going to see a leveling out. If you have a, if you have a homestead, you'll probably be seeing 10 percent per year until that valuation is essentially spent, because if you have a homestead, they don't hit you all at once, but they parse it out 10 percent per year. So it may well be that some folks see that 10 percent year-on-year until they're caught up, but hopefully, the real hard pains are out of the way, and we'll see a leveling of the volatility in tax burden over the next couple of years. But like you said, every situation is going to be different for every property owner out here, and some people may see a 50 or 60 percent increase, you know, depending if you have just raw land, et cetera.
Okay. Well, another issue, too, is all these properties that have back taxes, what's Ivenhoe doing about getting those up to date? Because, you know, I believe Bob brought up that there's some 20, 30 years in back, on back taxes.
Right.
Okay. I mean, why haven't y'all pursued that?
One point on that that's really, really important to understand is that the law firm that chases these things down, they don't work for free. And so there's a, there's a cost, there's a minimal cost that it, that they incur. Essentially, what they do is they chase it to take a percentage of whatever we get back, and at a certain point, they can't make their cost back out of it. So at a very low level of back taxes, it doesn't make any sense for them financially to chase it, and that leaves those properties in a strange kind of limbo of almost, they have to get far enough in arrears that it makes financial sense to chase it. And that's a difficult situation that we just, we can't necessarily.
Unless you do pursue it, that leaves all these back taxes on the taxpayers to make up the difference, which also brings to having an increase in taxes.
Well.
And that's not fair to the taxpayers, to people that pay their taxes.
The lots that Mr. Stoneman talked about, I looked at value. They're not worth enough to pay for the legal fees to go through the process.
So you just ignore them?
We can't do anything about it.
We don't really have much of an option, because we can't ask the attorneys that chase this to do it at a loss. The only alternative would be for us to pay out of general funds and have a line item, which would again be, which would again be paid for out of tax dollars. So either way, it's hitting the community as a shared expense. It's kind of a catch-22 situation. We don't really have a way to effectively go after those properties that have such a low back tax on them.
Because I know, because I know other counties have what they call a sheriff sale, where they.
Oh, they do here. They do here, and the county does that, and we work closely with Linebarger, and that's the ones that do that. We have actually brought up to Linebarger certain properties that, you know, please look at these, but like I say, there are some of them out there that the lot isn't worth $1,000, and it's going to cost, you know, $5,000, $10,000 to pursue it, so it's just not feasible.
But that's not every lot going to be that way.
I know.
What I would suggest on this, and thank you for bringing this, you know, up to the forefront, these town hall meetings are meant to offer council and the city opportunities to do a better job. And sometimes, that's about asking the question out loud so that we can consider it and figure out what our options are. I think that probably talking to Linebarger and Barge and find out what we can do about this. Are there any additional options? Are there any programs? It's worth pursuing, and it shouldn't take more than a phone call to at least inquire on it with them.
The representative from Linebarger has been wanting to come to a council meeting anyway, so he can, we can schedule him coming up for the next meeting, so that those questions can be addressed.
Okay.
So we'll plan on, I'm writing myself a note, so that we can ask all those questions of them, and they can explain it more clearly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. There's another, oh, Mr. Stoneman. Please introduce yourself in your address.
My name's Bob Stoneman, 249 Englemore. Just to clarify what happened, and I did a lot of investigating into this issue with the property taxes on vacant lots. Attorney gave me, and I talked to her directly, said it's $250 for them to even accept that they're going to examine the property. Then they take a percentage of the, if it does go to auction, they take a percentage of the sale. For instance, a property in Vacamis owes about $4,000. So if they take it, they put 250 bucks worth of their investigation, then it goes to auction. Let's say they do move it to auction. What happens is they take a percentage of the sale. So essentially, say the property only sells for $1,500. Well, the new owner isn't responsible for that back taxes on the property, so that just disappears. However, because they only get a percentage of the property value, I don't know of any attorney that's going to walk across the street for less than $500. So say they get 10 percent or 15 percent. So you've got 250 plus another 150. $400 for maybe four, five, six hours worth of work on doing a property, there's no attorney that's going to handle that. And I don't know that we can actually ask the city to absorb that kind of expense by having our own private office or something do that.
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, it's not feasible to do that. Even to look into it, it's not feasible.
Yeah.
Again, it comes down to attorney's fees.
Right.
And with anything like this, the only winners are the attorneys. So it's just kind of a moot point. Besides that, the majority of those taxes that owe go to schools, and they won't go into Ivenhoe.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't, no.
So it's kind of a moot point for Ivenhoe. So we get a couple of hundred bucks out of it. I don't.
If that.
I don't think that that's worth even discussing it. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, with that in mind, you know, Bob's, you know, closing statement there was, he doesn't think that it's worth it, and I think that a lot of what we, where we wind up a lot of times, is that we have a sense about things and how we feel about it, but I do think that it's worth opening up the conversation with the attorneys and say, you know, we want to be able to speak with clarity and in a definitive way to our community. What are the options? Is there any pathway that would be beneficial to the city? And if we can get that from somebody who, this is their expertise and this is what they do, then I think that we can inform the community, and they'll have a better understanding about it.
Well, like I say, I'll invite James to our next meeting. And remember, folks, everything that we do is recorded. We have our YouTube channel, so that if you're not able to attend a meeting, you can, you know, watch it later. It really is working out well, so we will have that person at our next meeting, so if you're not able to attend that meeting, you can see it on YouTube later. And Jackie, there's a question from online.
I'd like just one more little comment. When we, when Linebarger works on these back taxes, it's like Bob said, the school is first, the county's second, and we're last. And I believe, if I'm not wrong, we brought in about $45,000 in back taxes for this last year. So they're working on it.
Well, that was just people going in and paying their taxes. Linebarger had nothing to do with that.
Right, but it was still in back taxes.
Right.
So it's, they're working on it.
Jackie?
Okay, we have S.J. Abke. She had a couple of comments. First, she said business development plan for event planning is strongly needed. Her next comment was.
She's going to get a job. I love it when you suggest something. Get me her phone number.
She'll be here in February.
Okay, and the next one, it says it is 30,000 in delinquent taxes divided up, and it may not be worth chasing immediately. Also, she said, and I missed this comment earlier, she wanted to thank the council for answering her questions. And then next, we have Fred Trask, said Sherwood Forest Drive North, says last year, says last year was .8322, not .91. Said I believe .91 was there before, the tax amount.
Okay. I haven't got figures in front of me, so I can't, you know, my recollection was .91, but I'm not going to dispute that one. I don't have the figures in front of me.
It would still be a reduction either way.
Oh, yeah, it's a reduction, for sure. Any other questions? Can we move forward? Okay, the next thing that I had on the agenda was raises. There have been questions about, are people getting raises? I think they all deserve it. We have a really well-functioning organization, starting with, well, not starting with, I shouldn't say starting with, our Public Works, because how do you put anybody first? Our Public Works Department, these guys have done an amazing job. I, you know, I can't say enough for our, you know, well, it's five people, but it's four guys out there working and doing and maintaining 46 miles of roads. It's just incredible what they're able to do with a little bit of labor they have. We have been able to acquire equipment for them to enable them to do more, but I think the raise that we have given them is well-deserved. And then we go on to our law enforcement, and we, what we actually did not give raises to law enforcement, what we did was increase hours. There have been questions about, you know, law enforcement 24/7. We absolutely have not got the budget for that. It would be cost prohibitive. But we did add hours this year, and we're, every year, we're trying to add more hours to their, you know, to their time schedule. That's the best we can do. Our staff at the office, as Jackie has done a phenomenal job. She did get a raise this year. She's been here over a year, or she's finished her first year. Our county, our municipal judge, anyway, we did give insignificant raises, but they Anyway, we did give insignificant raises, but they did get somewhat of a raise. It's an incentive because they've done such a great job. Are there any questions about what we've done as far as raises are concerned? Like I say, when we went over all of this as a council at that workshop, there was no question about any of it. C.D. had not received a raise in I don't know how many years because he was at a point in, huh? I don't know that he ever got one. But the, but the thing, he was at a point in his, with, with insurance, health insurance. If we gave him a raise, it would have cost him more for insurance. It put him in a different bracket. And so he couldn't get a raise. Now he turned the magic number of 65. So we were finally able to give C.D. a raise and it's a much deserved raise. C.D. is the heart and soul of Ivanhoe. He, if without C.D., I don't know how we could function. So yes, he finally got a raise. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to apologize to the Marshals Department because when we went through these budgets, I did not fight enough to give you a raise. Yes, your hours did increase. You do the same amount of work for the same money. We should have been more in tune and gave you more money as well. Hopefully that we can go through this budget and find some money in there for you guys.
And I would like to point out, Will, that it was not requested. I asked every department to.
We should have asked for the money. Yeah. Been our responsibility as councils is like, hey, they need a raise as well. That's, that's on us. That's on me. I own that one. And I'm sorry.
To that, Will, I think that it's a, it's a council-wide responsibility. And maybe this is something that we add into the budgeting. This particular topic is something that we add into the budgeting standardization every year where we develop a presumed cost of living increase on an annual basis. And then we evaluate year over year. But every year, I think that there should be an expectation that we look at the current economic climate, inflation, things like that, and have a target for cost of living increase that we at least consider and evaluate. And then that way, every season, everybody gets the opportunity to move forward and, and stay up on their buying power.
Just one more comment on that. The Marshals Office asked for $57,000 increase. We gave them about 60% of that. And there was no budget for raises. We didn't, we didn't increase that. You're right.
Was there another question from online?
Okay, we're going to start out with Fred Trask wanted to correct where he said earlier about the taxes for last year. He said the .8322 was last year and he believes the .91 was the year before.
That is correct.
That was a correction he wanted to make.
Okay, thank you, Fred.
Okay, the next one, the next one was John Starling at 290 Charmaine Drive East. And it says, can the properties that are abandoned and are dumped, can they be declared health hazards and get them cleaned up?
That's another thing that we're going to address right now. Thank you, John.
And then our next question was S.J. Abkey. And has there been any market comprehension review for salaries? Because no raises have occurred for a significant period of time. These employees may be undervalued in the market.
Has there been one done? No. But did you want to address that?
Well, you know, this is, these forums and these town hall meetings are really a place for transparency. And, you know, Will spoke that we, you know, we've identified that we didn't, we didn't give an increase to the Marshals Department. And Terry made the statement at council this last week that we have challenges competing in the market to even secure people in, in the positions. And that's a reflection on where we started, you know, which was just trying to survive and get somebody in, in a, in a patrol car and where we've moved over the years. But we're to that point in various areas where we're going to have to start evaluating how we compete for resources. And human resources are our most important resources. So I, I think to Ms. Abkey's question, you know, when we have areas like the Marshals Department where we may be coming up against a, a challenge in getting people in to staff the roles, we may have to look at the market and start evaluating whether or not we can continue in the long term with the rates that we're offering. And, and that may, that may well be true for any of our departments. We just have to, have to make sure that we're doing a good job and monitoring whether or not we're, we're able to appropriately staff. Cause that, that's, that's one of the big, big key indicators is, is whether or not we're compensating appropriately.
Unless, you know, just FYI. First of all, we, we have increased our salaries for law enforcement over the years. We haven't done anything in the past few years. But you know, the hospital pays them $30 an hour to, you know, for security at the hospital. And how do you compete with that? I don't know how in the world they end up, you know, that's, that's a lot of money. And so, yeah, that's really, you know, we can't begin to compete with that. But that's just a, a point. Now, is there any, are there any other questions?
Well, a lot of this discussion has already been done. About my question was going to be, why did every department in the city receive a raise except for our marshals? When we incorporated to be a city, our, our whole goal was to strengthen our roads, our dams and our security. That's, that's what we incorporated over. And in my opinion, we need to get back to those basics. And I just think it's pitiful that every time we have a meeting, Terry has to get up here and say, I'm doing the best I can, y'all. Guys get paid 20 bucks an hour. Everybody else is paying them 30 plus. They're paying some of them 40 and 45 to sit in a car on a highway just for road traffic. I mean, IPOIA this year, we appreciate our marshals. We appreciate them so much. They have, because I know that people get really mad at us because we're out there hassling them, the little old ladies and the old guys and grumpy people, trying to make sure that everybody's got their permit. All we are about is security and safety so that our children can walk to the park and play and be safe. That we're trying our best to see that things that are happening out there in America don't happen right here under our noses. I've had parents come to me and say, because of y'all and what you're doing, my children can now walk to the park. My children can now come and play and I don't feel like I have to watch them every minute. That's how I grew up. We were kids, we played outside. Parents had to call us in, beg us in to come and eat when it got dark. A big part of that, I would say a huge part of that, and I say that because for 15 years, my husband and I have done security out here just on our own, just trying to do what was right for the community. And we had no backup. We had no backbone. Because of our marshals, we now have backbone. People are complying now. People are thanking the marshals for what they're doing. IPOA had to raise their rate. We pay the marshals $30 an hour. As financial officer for the association, I went to the board and we found ways where we could take money out of this or out of that. It wasn't pleasant, it wasn't easy, but it's what we had to do. We have to make our marshals a priority. I know this is a challenge, just like it's a challenge for all of us to make ends meet these days. But we have to make our marshals a priority.
Thank you, sir. By the way, that was Sarah Warren.
Can I comment on that? I would like to comment on that.
Sure.
Some time ago, we met with, with Marshal Riley and council and we asked him what it would take to be competitive with an hourly wage. And we voted on a $25 per hour wage for the.
Who did?
Huh?
Who did?
Council, all of us. All of us. Well, we did, we did. And it was, I thought perpetual and it was going to be ongoing, but it ended up being some ARPA money or something that came from somewhere else. And it ran out and they just got a check one day that didn't have the full amount. So I didn't know that it had a, an ending date when we voted on it. I thought it was going to be $25. And Terry had said that that would be, that would be, well, it was when Chuck Marshall was alive.
Right, he was the only one making the 25.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's interesting.
That wasn't clear either at the time. That was, that was.
It sounds like this needs to be a future agenda item in the very near term so that we can get some clarity on where we are and where we need to go.
Yeah, we need to, we need to be open and, and clear with our marshals on what we're doing and how we're doing it and how we're going to support them moving forward. That's all.
Absolutely.
I'm just.
Well, what happened, okay, what happened with that ARPA money?
Yeah.
When, in the midst of COVID, they were throwing money at law enforcement. And, and so they said, okay, you know, you've got till the end of December, you can spend whatever on law enforcement and get reimbursed for it. So I told Terry, I said, go for it. You know, you can, you, you can get as many hours in and we'll, you know, we'll pay you this rate and it, it through December 31st. Because we had a budget to, to work with. So, so yes, they were reimbursing us for, till December 31st. And I made that very clear when I talked to Terry about that. I said, go crazy until December 31st. Put as many hours in as you can because we're going to get reimbursed for this. It was very clearly stated.
Yes, you, you did, you did state that, but I don't remember it being clear that it was going to end at December 31st.
Oh yeah, that was part of the, that was part of the whole thing. Yes, they, the government was throwing all kinds of money at that, right, at that point.
C.D., can, can you just go ahead and make a note that this is something that needs to go on, on the next council agenda as a high priority item to, to get some work done on? Cause this is, this is critical to the community and to our, our infrastructure. Additionally, I think that we should put our grant administrators to work on chasing down opportunities to fund our marshals department. If there's anything or any way, I know Jill is great at sniffing out opportunities. And if we can subsidize in any way, whether it be temporary or long-term, that's, that's what we pay them for is to, you know, do the legwork.
One note real quick. Being retired from the human resource professional, I've been in a lot of these situations where we research companies to see what they're paying. Are we average, above average, or below average? And one of those, one of the jobs that we had, that we had get very competitive with CDL drivers. You couldn't get a CDL driver. Same scenarios with our marshals. And how we're going, how are we going to compete in a market to get marshals here? So right now we're below average from what I'm understanding. But we're going to have to look at ways and hopefully the grant writers can find a way to get that, that we can move more funds into the marshals that we can get their salaries up. Maybe the ARPA fund, we can revisit that budget, pull some money out of them in the short term to get them more money. Maybe we can move some of the line items around. We need to find a way to get them some more money. And I'm glad you put that on the agenda so we can research this.
Right. And another thing is I'm going to check with the county. I know that, like I say, the hospital and that's, that's extra work. It's part-time, you know, takes a shift here and there. I'm going to find out what the county pays the hourly rate. When we started, Terry, with us, that we were paying the hourly rate that the county paid. And I think maybe we're within that range right now, but I am going to definitely research that.
Just one, one little item here. We have 104 hours a week is what we have. If we raised it to $30 an hour, it'd be from 108,000, 160, which it is now, to 162,240, which is 54,080, which is doable, but where's the money going to come from? And that's what you do when you do the budget. You figure out how much money you need for this item, for that item. And we can increase their salaries, no doubt about it. But if we do, we may have to cut somewhere else. So at this point, it looks to me like that's the next year's budget item.
Well, if we raise their pay to $25 an hour, it's 135,200, which is another 26,000 per year.
Well, that's right. It's 54 if you raise it up to 30, that's what I was looking at. But you could raise it to 21, it'd be more.
Okay, okay. Let's go ahead and have this as our, you know, line item for, for our next agenda. Question online.
These are comments by S.J. Abkey again, from 1135 Robinhood. And it says the market comparison review would get these salaries to an appropriate pay rate. Said the market salary reviews can be done at any time of the year. Finding the money to support it becomes the job of the council.
Right, exactly. Oh, absolutely. And there were, you know, I, I wish that we were in a situation that we could, we could offer what Woodville offers their people. All the benefits and all this. We, we haven't been in that situation. We haven't been, we are extremely, extremely underfunded. Does everybody understand that? I mean, i- if we could, I would love to be able to offer all the benefits, do all the stuff that other people do. Woodville has a budget of $6 million. We have a budget of 600,000. Okay, we have more miles of roads, we have dams to support. And we just don't have the funding that other places do. Look at all the businesses, you know, Woodville has. We have a few. That's why I keep telling everybody that economic development is extremely important. Nobody wants any change. Nobody wants new neighbors. Nobody wants businesses in here. But the thing is how, where's the money going to come from? You know, you can do festivals and it'll bring in money. But what we're looking at is a need for our community because I've asked engineers and not just once, and it came up in our, in our comprehensive plan that our infrastructure budget should be around a million and a half dollars a year. We've got 200,000, a little over 200,000. So that's how underfunded we are in that line item. Now, like I say, it's not that I don't care. It's not that, that I think all of us care about, especially our, our officers. They, they, they put themselves out there. We appreciate that. And yes, let's look in to see, see what we can do. And let's see if we're even within the range as far as what the county is paying. I hate to think that we're way under.
I, I don't think it's a, not to continue beating, beating on it. But I don't necessarily think that it's black or white, where we are, where we need to be. There may well be a progression through it, but I think that we need to have a target. You know, I think that the, a market analysis makes good sense to figure out where we need to be. And whatever we can do, we make that movement towards it and then start thinking strategically and planning for how are we going to get to the point where we need to be to compensate these folks appropriately and make sure that our, our law enforcement infrastructure is strong and stable.
Right.
I have to agree with Councilwoman Harrington on that. Baby steps. If we give them anything, it will be a step in the right direction. I think they'd be appreciative.
Absolutely. I totally agree with that.
I'm Patsy Morris. I live at 520 Charmaine Drive South. I really hate to display my ignorance here, but I need to. Seems to be the only way you can ask a question is to stand up in front of y'all and say it. Well, we've had Terry since day one. I just don't even know how many deputies we have. And so I was just curious.
We've got three right now. We've got Bob Crossman and Stephen Drum and Terry. And then on occasion, we have Stephen Hoak and Jim Zachary. Those are, okay. One more question from, from online.
We have a couple more questions and a comment. One of the comments is Krista Gillette, and I don't have an address for her. Says we definitely need more small businesses here towards hiking, boating and vacationing.
Okay.
So the next one is Vance Townsend of 464 Sherwood Forest. And he's got a few questions. It says, if there are no additional net revenues for the city, how will growth and the cost of maintenance in the city be accommodated?
If there's, repeat the question.
If there are no additional net revenues for the city, how will the growth and the cost of maintenance in the city be accommodated?
Right. Well, exactly. That's one of the things that we're talking about. We, we did have a small, we have voted for a small increase in, in our revenues or taxes this year. And it's to accommodate the, the additional expenses that we have. We're talking about, you know, if, if people want, we want all the things, but are we willing to pay for it? Because it, it costs us money. Now we have, I'm totally on, on board with looking at ways to increase revenue. And I don't know if that, that answers the question?
Well, I, I think that that goes back to some of the discussions that we've had. You know, how do we get creative on generating revenue? You know, put our, our grant writers to work. Start thinking about doing, you know, public events that we can capitalize on, on a beautiful community and, and activities and different things like that. But also economic development, getting businesses in. As we, as we improve. Um, but also economic, uh, development, um, getting businesses in, um, as we, as we improve our infrastructure. When, I, I can speak to this because construction is my industry and I know that when we started working on the roads, people started investing in properties. New construction, uh, uh, picked up significantly. Um, even the sale of, of raw land increased. There was turnover in, in properties that hadn't, hadn't sold or hadn't been utilized in a long time. And all of those things cumulatively will be additive to that net revenue. Um, but we're, we're already in a position and legislation has put us in a downward spiral. Because 3.5% is the max that we can make in additional tax revenue every year. And even normal inflation, as they say, is runs four to four and a half percent. That means our buying power will be eroded every single year indefinitely forever. And so we are going to have to focus in on these more creative pathways to generate those additional revenues to keep building out infrastructure. But conversations like this, meetings like this really highlight the need to get on it. And really it, it falls on, on council and, and the city offices to start taking action and moving towards developing those ideas.
Right. More, more comments?
Yes, uh, the next question is from Vance Townsend at the 464 Sherwood Forest. He said, why are sitting council members not 100% clear on how monies are spent?
We know how monies are spent, and we may not know the exact dollar that goes into any particular air, item or area. But, you know, we, we know how monies are spent, and we don't have enough of them.
Any other comments, Council? Cause you're the ones. Okay. If there's nothing else, we're gonna move along. Uh, code enforcement is the next item. And I would like to address, uh, John Starling's question about cleaning up some of the stuff that we have going on in Ivanhoe. I, I know that, uh, what I had suggested, we, we got ARPA money. This is, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, and every city in the country got ARPA money. We got approximately $350,000, uh, and any cities under, that received under a certain amount, uh, under 10 million, isn't it, CD? Are, they, they basically said we can spend that money on anything we wanted to. Now, we have, we have, uh, an 11 and a half million dollar grant that we have a 1% match on. That means we have to put up 1%. So that's 114,000, uh, which, you know, is not much when we're getting 11 and a half. So that, that's part of that money that, that, part of what I suggested spending that money on. And, uh, another thing that I suggested spending money on out of that fund was $40,000 toward, uh, code enforcement. And what that means, I, I know that Jackie has gotten people calling up and saying, oh, so you're getting $40,000 a year raise? No. No, that's not what it was. $40,000, I'm suggesting that we set aside for those properties that need to be cleaned up that are health and safety issues, and, and it costs money. We voted to, to, uh, clear a, a piece of property some time ago, uh, down by Debbie Peterson's house across the street. And we never had a, a line item or funding to do that. So this is why I'm suggesting, let's take $40,000. So let's go ahead and start cleaning up some of this stuff. We do have, uh, Jonathan in, in place to be able to remove junk vehicles. He's working on being able to re- remove junk, like travel trailers, because we have some of those and, and he's, you know, we're working with him to be able to, to remove some of that stuff. Once we, we have to go through a process. You can't just take somebody's old junk car. You have to go through a legal process. But once we've done that, we need some funding to be able to remove some of this stuff, to clear some of the stuff up. So that's where that $40,000 is. And, and, uh, Mr. Starling, thank you for your question. And that's what we're looking at, at, at expending this coming year.
Um, for visibility, both to council and to the community, Jackie, ballpark figure. What's the timeframe that it takes to, say, get a junk vehicle removed legally? Going through the process of certified mail and responses and non-responses and all that stuff? If we have an unresponsive property owner, how long does it take ballpark to take care of a situation? Whether it be a, a dilapidated, you know, uh, shed or abandoned vehicle or whatever?
If it comes to a building, it can take several months. If it comes to a vehicle, it could take approximately 30 to 60 days if we get absolutely no response from anybody.
But it can't be cleared out in, in 30 to 60 days. It can't be picked up and removed in 30 to 60 days, can it?
The vehicle?
Yeah.
Just depends if we get a response or not. If we can get a response, we can actually get it out there a lot quicker. If we can find somebody that has a title to it, we can get it out that same day if they have the title on hand.
And they're willing to do it.
Yes. And we've had several of those recently, that that's some of what I've been working with Jonathan. And I talked to the people. They agree to it. They have a title on hand. I called Jonathan. And if he's available that day, he goes and removes that vehicle that day.
So just, just for, for clarity, I, I know that there's lots of concern across the community about some of these situations. Um, for anybody who, who, um, has watched or come to the city council meetings, uh, Jackie's, uh, been, um, giving reports as to the closed cases and open cases. You know, we, we may have 200 or so open cases, but, you know, keep in mind, um, some of them may be a minimum of, of two months and some of them much longer to actually get cleared. So, uh, chipping away at them bit by bit is, it literally is the best that we can do in some cases. And we appreciate, uh, the work that you do, Jackie, and we're, we're grateful as a community to have that department in place. Because for, um, you know, a long time out here, we didn't have anything really, really in place and, and working, so.
See, that's another comment. For a long time, we have had no ability really to, to enforce. Now what's happening is we are getting code enforcement department that is functioning, and people don't like it. There's always, the rules have always been there. Uh, you know, but now we're beginning to enforce the rules, and so it, it causes a lot of commotion. The one thing I have seen is Jackie will work with people if you, if they're willing to do anything. You know, clean up a lot. She'll send them a notification or whatever that needs to be done. And, uh, she works with them. She gives them time. She, she's really been very patient with people. If they're willing to do and respond, she, she works with them. And so does our judge. So, uh, it's not like we're, uh, being drastic with people. If you respond to any correspondence that, that is sent out by our code enforcement department, they will work with you. And we want everybody to know that. We're not, we're not trying to hurt anyone. We're trying to, you know, do the best we can for our community. Another comment.
Okay, we have, uh, SJ Abkey again. She said, for the properties that are considered condemned, has the council thought of sending notification to the property owners for timely removal or enforcement of the fire department? By having the fire department use it as a training to burn it down, it could be controlled manner.
Cities, cities actually do this.
No, no, not anymore. Wait a minute, wait a minute. That used to be something that was done, a controlled burn. They do not do that anymore.
I'll be.
Yeah, it's not allowed anymore. So, uh, just FYI. I, you know. Yeah, yeah, we thought about that, but, uh, no, it can't be done anymore.
Okay. The rest of that comment was the cost is unbilled to the property owner and the revenue is to the fire department.
Uh, well, like I say, it's not allowed anymore. That was at, at one time. Uh, and anytime, anything that we do, like the cost of removal of that building or that lean to across from Debbie that we're gonna get finally removed, that cost will, we will have, place a lien on that property. So anytime we expend money for anything like that, there will be a lien on, on the property to, and if the property changes hands, we are able to get our money back.
I'd like to touch base in the standpoint of what Jackie said in the standpoint of the, it, the, one of the biggest issues is contacting and getting somebody that owns that property. Cause we can't do anything unless we know who owns it and get something to write it from that owner.
Yeah, that's another problem that we have here in Ivanhoe. Ivanhoe's over 50 years old. And there are a lot of, we don't, we can't find the owners of a lot of these lots. And we're not the only ones. The county, they don't have the records. You can, so it's hard to locate people. Mr. Stoneman, you?
Yeah, Bob Stoneman, Englemore Drive. Um, my question is about the, the code. What exactly is it that you need to help move this forward? Um, it seems like this is kind of a, a push-pull thing where, well, we'd like to do this, but we can't do this. We, we, we should do it, but there's this stop on us to do it. So my question is, what's needed? What do we have to do to get this done? We have a grant, you said?
Ten.
How much?
Oh, you mean, what are you talking about? That ARPA money?
Forty thousand.
You were saying before you? Forty thousand into it. Is that 40,000 just an arbitrary number? Is it, uh?
It's just a suggestion that was made as far as utilizing some of that, those funds.
And my thought is, has the person in, you're doing code enforcement? What do you need? How much do you need to get this done better? Maybe an assistant? Uh, do you need somebody that could be on the phone all day? What is it you need? And all I'm suggesting is that we take a look at this more of a base level. Well, we, we know we have a problem. Now we need to find out what information, and we need to get the problem resolved. And then once we get all that information, how much is it gonna cost? And then proceed with the refix, the fix, the, whatever we need to do to get it done. Uh, it, it's like any other problem. First, we have to admit there is a problem, then we collect all the information we can, figure out what to do, and then execute the solution. So I, I, that's what I think. Have you gotten anything together? Could you put something together like that for the council?
Okay.
That's all I'm asking?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I, I understand. Uh, we, we are faced with, uh, situations that have happened over the years of not, not being able to, uh, have code enforcement, you know, in place. But have we addressed the problem? Yes, we have. Are we working on it? Yes, we are. Uh, right now, to add another employee, uh, right after we've set a budget, probably isn't the time of the year to do that. No, 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 I, yeah, no, I, I agree. I agree. I understand the suggestion. Uh, what, what we're looking at as far as allotting a certain amount of money to do cleanup, I think Jackie's doing an amazing job. Jackie and, and John Craven over here, they're working hard on code enforcement. And you've got 200 open cases. We have a lot of problems here, but they're really working and, and getting an awful lot done. So, uh, the program is working. That's no, no question.
I also like to address in the standpoint, I don't want anybody to think that Jackie spends eight or 10 hours a day on nothing but code enforcement. She wears four or five hats. So anybody that knows and, and in the office knows other things that she does in the standpoint of taking care of Terry and his people, uh, works with CD, uh, so permits. There's numerous other things she does. She may only spend two or three hours a day on code enforcement. Now, of course, yes, we would love to spend more time, but it's just not there. So I just want to clarify that.
Another thing that I, that I do want to bring out, and thank you, John, for that, because Jackie does, she does an incredible job. When we get reports, people come in and report things to Jackie or call in a report. And if, like in the situation with this, with Ms. Welch, that everybody probably knows about because it was all over Facebook. That was a result, we were not picking on Ms. Welch. Somebody came in and reported the situation. When there's a report, we have to follow up on it. We have to investigate. That's the reason the whole can of worms was opened. Nobody was trying to pick on anybody. But we do, when there is a report, we have to follow up on it. Uh, and I would invite all of our council members, if you have a question about anything, please come. And like Jackie said, the end of that, ask, look at the file, see what the facts are before we start taking a stand and saying, oh, well, we're picking on poor people. We're not picking on poor people. That was a result of a report. And there is a full documentation of everything that was done. So, uh, you know, that, that's really important to understand. I know that there have been other people that have, have given us good information about problems that are, that exist. And, uh, we appreciate that because you're our eyes and ears. We can't be everywhere in Ivanhoe. But if you, if you see a problem happening in a code violation or something, please let us know. Uh, and we appreciate, and I, you know, I look at Galen, cause she's helped us a lot, letting us know about situations, and, and it's much appreciated. Okay. Anything else?
One quick, quick second, Sarah. Um, I, I agree with Mr. Stoneman's perspective of, uh, that there needs to be a strategic assessment of what the needs are to get this done. Um, simultaneously, we are working on the car while we're screaming down the highway. The, even looking at, at small components of code enforcement and ordinances, um, you know, taking a look at the campers or taking a look at, at all of these different situations, it, it is an elephant that we're trying to eat. And, um, you know, Jackie does wear several hats. Um, so do we have the appropriate, um, staffing to tackle all of the different code violations and, and enforcement that, that need to be done? Absolutely not. Do we have the funding to do it? Absolutely not. So we do what we can as we can, and I do think that it's appropriate that as we're moving through these different challenges and these different questions, we start taking some amount of time to look at our lessons learned and start building a strategy that's forward-looking that says, okay, what, what could make this process clearer, more effective, um, more compassionate? And service the community in a, in a better way. So I, I appreciate Mr. Stoneman's, um, highlighting that having a strategy, for instance, we know that there are probably several layers, maybe even a dozen or more primary code violations that are going on everywhere. We cannot address them all at once, um, but prioritizing them will give us, uh, an ability to parse out those funds in a way that we feel is most beneficial to the community. And it will, if we track it appropriately, it'll give us an idea about what kind of budget we may need in future years to resolve the remainders. It's very much a, a work in process, but I think that, um, developing the strategy as we go is key to being able to improve and be more effective for the community in the future. So maybe another workshop at some point in time.
Maybe.
It's gonna be a full year of workshops, guys.
Yeah, there you go.
Just a couple of comments about what I'm hearing up here. I know that Marion Blackstone works with, uh, all of the property, uh, sales, uh, investors, companies. This all started after COVID hit. And I don't know what happened, but all at once, everybody wants to buy property in the country. And it's been an ongoing thing across the country. When any, anytime we go anywhere in a, in the more rural areas, that you can see they're being swallowed up by investors. I, I don't know if this is gonna be an ongoing process or if it's, or if we're gonna see it fluctuate. I don't know. But I know that for some reason, these investors are able to find these people that own these properties. I don't know how. Maybe that's something that we need to, uh, I don't know if they'll even divulge to us as to how they find them. But these people, these investment companies from all over the country are finding properties in Ivanhoe. And because of that, IPOA has been blessed with the transfer fees and with them paying the back fees. It's been a blessing. Where Marion's worked hard at it. She's brought in tons of money. She's down here at the drop of every email that hits her box. And that's just something, maybe an idea of how, I don't know how we find out how they know. How do they know? Through some of this, we have also investigated with our attorney as to putting liens on properties. That just sounds wonderful, put a lien on property. Well, it costs money. It's expensive. And we found out through our attorney, they're good for 10 years. That's it. 10 years. So sometimes it's futile because there are, we have a stack of papers, probably eight inches deep right now, of people that do not pay their maintenance fees in Ivanhoe, have not paid their maintenance fees, owe thousands of dollars, and we have tried to find out if we could actively pursue it. And it's, it just gets, it's, it's, it's not, it's not even cost-effective to even try. These are just things that I'm commenting on what's been going on. I have also done my research on this, the code enforcement. I have some questions for council on code enforcement. I think that it's very important that I think that it's very important that the citizens of Ivanhoe need to know that we do have deed restrictions. Patsy, you said you don't like standing up here and asking a stupid question. Well, let me tell you, I hate it. And we were called out in an IPOA meeting, and I was blindsided. Been on the board for almost four years. I thought I was doing a good job. It was called a complete and total failure. I did not know. I had no idea at the time. And my stupidity, my ignorance, I apologized part right there in that meeting. And I will openly apologize to every single person. For four years, I have told people that the IPOA is only over Parks and Lakes. That's what I was told. I believed it. Trusted officials told me that. And I believed that. I got on that board to be, to keep the Parks and Lakes private. Well, now, I have found out that IPOA is over the deed restrictions. The deed restrictions are alive and well. But they have become non-compliant in most cases, this is an opinion by an attorney, because of non-enforcement. Because IPOA failed their duty, they failed their job. We had the lawsuit that crippled us, crippled this whole community. We incorporated to save the city, just not to save the city, but to save the whole community as a whole. We didn't want to become a Barlow Lakes or wherever else it was that, I don't remember. That was so long ago, I can't even remember where all they were giving off.
Okay, we're going to, yeah.
All kinds of examples they were giving. So now, my question is to the city and to the council. When you have a code, an ordinance that you pass, is that ordinance effective from that date forward? Or are they retroactive?
From that date forward. However, when you look in, particularly on the ordinances that are listed online, there are dates that are referenced under each of the ordinances. And in most of the cases, what you're going to see is a reference for when it was codified. And so we've had ordinances in place since the city incorporated. But every time that we've had a codification or an editing, a digital editing, where the ordinances are republished, lots of them reference that new date. And so it's very important that people understand that the date that's referenced right underneath the ordinance doesn't mean that the ordinance didn't exist before then. It just means that that publishing date is acknowledged there.
Okay. This is, I know this is confusing to me. I don't know about to anybody else. But I'm going to put it in layman's terms, okay? You speak much better than I do. Okay. My neighbor has two buildings sitting on the property line, okay? I know when they got put up. And I know that's against the rules. There's potty in that one of them. That goes on all over Ivanhoe. They don't, it's not a habitat for them. It's a convenience for them. It's hooked up to their septic. I'm not going to, I'm not going to be one of them neighbors who's going to fit. I'm not going to go against my neighbors. Neighbor on the other side has a fence. I did report that one to the association years ago, and they told me they didn't want to make them mad. Okay? So, fine, I just let live, whatever. There are people that, we've had that attitude for so long in this community of non-enforcement, non-compliance. Well, let's face it, probably 90% of Ivanhoe is not compliant. In some form or fashion, I would say, 90% may even be, you know, low, that we are non-compliant in some form or fashion with our deed restrictions. If a person has been non-compliant for that long, say a person is, let's put it out there because that's one of the hot topics. Say a person's living in a travel trailer or RV, it's hooked up to their septic, their light is clean, it's nice. They've been there for five, six years. Can the city go back now that they have an ordinance, which I know they don't right now, but if they pass an ordinance that says no living in travel trailers? I know deed restrictions say no living in travel trailers, but...
The ordinances also state that there is no living, there is no habitation in an RV and a camper. And it says that in multiple locations.
Okay, but...
To your point, I can't speak at this point in time to the legal precedents or where we're at with that. Council does have a meeting scheduled with Brad Alrod, our attorney, the first week in November. And we're going to go pretty in-depth on this exact question of knowing that we're out of compliance in many different areas. Legally, what's the appropriate action to take? What are options? You know, if people have been out of compliance for a number of years, certainly it's going to amount to, in some cases, when the city was incorporated, you know, that was an original adoption date of ordinances that state, for instance, for the RVs, that you can't inhabit a trailer. You know, anything that was previous to that, we have to get a legal, you know, advice as to what can or cannot be done with that. For anything that was past the date that the ordinance was adopted, then we'll have to take a look at what our options are for addressing or remedying those situations. The short of it is, is that this is a question that's weighing heavily on council right now. I've kind of taken up a bit of a mantle for resolving it. But we're seeking legal counsel to find out what the options are and how to put together a strategy. This isn't something that we want to charge headlong into. It needs to be well-thought-out. It needs to be legal. It needs to be fair. I wish I could say that this was going to be a short process to go through. But because we have to do it legally, we have to do it ethically, and we have to do it with a strategy in mind for the community, we're going to have to take a little time. And this is something that will probably be on the agenda for council meetings on a monthly basis just for an update to the community, to see where things are as we get more information and more clarity. Yeah, it's...
This is something that we too, in the association, are researching with an attorney to find out. I want answers as to what is enforceable and what is not enforceable. And he has told us that some things would have to be decided by judge on what is enforceable and what is not enforceable. I don't, I don't, I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing this for the community, the people that live here, that started here. I understand a lot of people want Ivanhoe to grow and be better and whatever. But, you know, and maybe at that point, that's going to happen. But we have to think about the people that have been here 20, 30 years and where they are in their lives and in their stages. And if nothing else, perhaps there is a grandfather clause that can be put in. And they can stay where they are. And then upon their passing and then the property at that point, that date, then it changes.
And that will undoubtedly be a discussion that council is going to have to go through. We're going to have to decide, A, what the rules say today. B, if we believe that the rules should say something else for tomorrow. And then how do we manage that in-between period where we've got the last 30 years of how folks have been making decisions and living? And that's part of why we've engaged Brad is to find out what the options are. And I've directly asked him, you know, we need to understand about grandfathering, about potential variance structures, hardship cases, different things like that. So these are discussions that will absolutely be had. I want the community to know that we're not just looking at this from a standpoint of black and white, that's what the rule is saying, so that's how it has to be. We're working with people here.
Right.
We're working with family. We're working with neighbors. And we want to make sure that we do everything that we can, both to take a look at the needs of the individuals while we're planning for the long-term health and well-being of the community at large.
And that, this is a huge avenue of stress for people that I'm hearing. Undo stress. You should have peace in your community, in your home. You should not have this kind of stress on you. And for people to go around, city officials, and tell people, don't worry about it. We're not going, we're not going to bother you because we know you're okay. We're just not going to do that. So...
Okay.
Which example?
I don't know if anybody else is interested. I'd kind of like to hear your finish of that example.
There are plenty of examples of people that are living, that are living in travel trailers that have been here. And, I mean, they're living in travel trailers, they're hooked up to a septic. But it's specifically the deed restrictions state no living in travel trailers. But the deed restrictions have been ignored, but through ignorance. I've been on the board four years. Kathy was president of the board for I don't know how many years. I mean, there's a lot of us in here that have been on the board. And through either ignorance or through being crippled from funding, whatever. I want to know what is now considered unenforceable. And I just want the people of Ivanhoe to know that they have peace in their own home. And I don't think that it's right if people go and say, hey, man, you're out of compliance, but we're not going to, we're not going to do nothing to you, but we're going to go after this other one. People need this peace. I'm just here for the clarification.
And I appreciate that, Sarah. One thing people got to understand also, during COVID, there were certain restrictions...
Okay, let's be quiet while he speaks.
During COVID, there were certain restrictions and things put in place by the government that could not take place even if you had an ordinance in place. An example, travel trailers. We could not go against anybody that had a travel trailer because the government said. And that was nearly two years of code enforcement, I mean, COVID. So I just want to clear that up.
And I think everything that we do, we want to take into consideration. We're not lacking compassion and understanding. Yes, there are rules. Rules have been in place forever. And we have to figure out what we can do to move forward. I agree, Sarah, you know, what do we do? You can't just say, okay, you're out of here. Anyway, it's a difficult situation and something that we're going to look at. Joe has been standing here for a long time waiting to speak.
Joe McIntyre, 186 Ivanhoe Ranchetts Drive. In, just real quick for those, just real quick for those folks that haven't been close to what the city's been doing since 2010. In 2010, that's when the city was effectively placed by vote to run Ivanhoe. Now, from 2010 to 2016, people worked on the ordinances. But we didn't have a person running as the code enforcement officer or the code enforcement person. So we went all of those years with people doing whatever they had been doing back in 2008. Now, in 2016, I'm sorry, in 2014, I think that was the first year that the city council asked volunteers to take over code enforcement. I, along with two other people, volunteered to do that. I then went to the state, and they said, well, you have to be employed by the city if you're going to become a code enforcement officer. Then you have to go to school, and then you have to pass some test. So in order to do that, the city council spent the money for me to accomplish that. So then, from 2016 until 2020, I handled that position as a paid employee of the city.
$10 a month?
$10 a month. And I only took the $10 because the state required code enforcement officers to be paid. Okay? Then I told the city that when I got to be 80 years old, I was going to retire. And I did that. And that's how the ordinances were changed to remove the word officer. Because if you're an officer, you have to go through so much training and pass certain tests. So everyone needs to know that this young lady here who's doing all of this work along with the help of, you know, John, has an extremely difficult job. Nobody loves you when you're going around saying, well, you know, you need to clean up your yard or you need to put a roof on your house or whatever. But just keep that in mind as you think about things that you want to accomplish. I never was able to convince people who were living in travel trailers that they shouldn't be. And I did try stopping people who were bringing travel trailers in from doing that, just like people who were bringing in old mobile homes. And I live in a mobile home. But right now, I can't take my mobile home and move it in Ivanhoe because it's over 10 years old. So I think we all need to keep in mind that people who were living here 30, 40 years ago need to be, in my estimation, left alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Galen Musney, 249 Sherwood Forest Drive North. I just want to clarify something that Kathy said because this is on YouTube. I don't go around reporting people.
No, but there's...
I'm not turning in people, and I didn't turn in Tammy Welch. Just to clear the record up. But I am going to go to the city and Jackie. When you have a pile of brush as tall as your mobile home that's not supposed to be on the street it's on, and you burn it all night long, I am going to turn that in. I am going to turn in when your septic is spraying human feces out of this sprinkler head so bad that we threw up, literally threw up when we walked outside. I am going to turn that in. I'm going to turn in anything that's harmful to this community. If you back a travel trailer in, and I'm not against travel trailers, I'm not against living in them, but you've got to be state-regulated. If you're hooked up to septic, I don't care what you live in. But don't back it in a street over with no septic and the blue poop thing sitting out there that you're emptying it in. And where are you taking that? I am going to turn you in. But I want to clarify for everybody on YouTube that I'm not running around tattling on anyone.
And Galen, I'm so sorry if that was the impression that I gave. No, no, no. Oh, no, no. I appreciate when people tell us that when there's actually an issue. And that's one of the things that you have done. Like you say, if it's something that threatens our health and safety. Okay. If it's something that threatens our health and safety, it really is important that people talk about it. We are an hour and a half into this meeting and not near halfway through. Is that someone new online or is it somebody that's already made comments?
I have both.
Okay. Let Lloyd go ahead because he has not made a comment before.
I'm Lloyd Almsberg. I live on 563 Sherwood Forest Drive. My, the code enforcement, first of all, just so that people do know, I was called a code enforcement officer before McIntyre, just so you know that. I just felt when I was a code enforcement officer, there was no sense in having it because you could not enforce it, period. And I went, I had to go to those workshops too. I went to the workshops and the guy says, you can't do it unless you have law enforcement involved in it. And we didn't have law enforcement when I was doing it. And that was in 2012. Now, my problem with code enforcement today is, and it has more to do with the code enforcement board. You need to be able to talk to people within the community when you're going to decide this, and the one thing that's on everybody's mind is these camp trailers. Have you ever talked to anybody about it before you, it came up? The code enforcement people or the boards, they're told, you can't talk to anybody. And that's ridiculous. It's the same thing with city council. You guys have to be more open. And if you're going to decide on taxes, on code enforcement, on any of this stuff, it would be nice to go out and ask, have you been talked to?
Somebody wants to talk to you, Lon.
But you need to, when you're making these decisions about... But you need to, when you're making these decisions about the trailers or I don't care what it is, the junk vehicles, and you want to make a change, you can do away with some ordinances that are not necessary. And, you know, when we have a little town like this, we don't need an ordinance policy this thick. You can get rid of some of those and then you don't have to worry about enforcing them. But to be honest, the biggest problem that I see in in Ivanhoe is non-communication with the people. At city councils, no one can make a comment until you vote on it. You vote on it and then somebody, it's already done. Same thing with the taxes today. It's already done. Can you make a comment about it? Yeah, but it's too late. Same thing with the if now luckily, the trailer thing hasn't been decided yet. But had you voted on that two months ago, like when it was brought up, it would have been too late. And then if somebody makes a comment about it, then you're kind of penalized or not penalized, but you're looked at, well, you're just complaining. It doesn't have anything to do with complaining. It has to do with what is really right. And two people have come up and said this in a row. When something's been going on for 25 years, now is the time you're going to stop it? It's, you know, maybe you got to look at that, too. And and I've only been here since 2012. So, you know, I I don't know all of the background on everything. But man, I don't think you have to make rules. And if you see a rule that's really causing a division in the community, it might not be a good rule. Maybe you can do away with that one. So that's just my opinion. I, you know, and like I say, I don't have a travel trailer. So it doesn't matter to me. But, you know, there's a lot of people that have them and have had had them. And I know I used to have a fifth wheel. It was nicer than my house. And it was, plain and simple. It was nicer than my house. But and if I needed to live in it when I retired, two people, I could have lived in it. Now, I I agree with whoever I think Sarah did. If you have a travel trailer, what's the difference between a travel trailer and a mother-in-law house? As long as it's hooked up to a septic.
I'll I'll say about the campers, there's going to be extensive conversations about where both where we are and where we're going to go as a community because we you're asking great questions. It's the same questions everybody else, you know, is asking that are that's concerned about it. Um, and and these are discussions that will be had. Um, I I can assure you that between, uh, you know, the five of us up here, there's plenty of people who want to make sure that we ask the right questions for the right reasons. And that's why we're taking our time on this. And this is this is the campers are something that have um, really popped up in recent months as a critical critical concern item. There's plenty more. But the way that we work through this first situation with the campers, I think, is going to set the tone for how we go through the ordinances and reevaluate where they are on down the line, item by item. Because this isn't the only thing that we need to to assess, whether or not what we've got on the books today is right or not. There's lots of other things. And we're growing into the ordinances and we're having to make decisions about what we want for the future as we go.
Yeah, no, like I say, I again, this thick of organ- ordinance ordinances, I don't know if we need that many.
Yeah.
Yeah. There they are. For a lot of ordinances in the middle of the community, and this is a recreational community, too.
Right.
Whether we like it or not, it is a recreational.
Right.
And that's what a travel trailer is, recreational.
Yeah. Uh, yes, Tammy.
Uh, just so everybody knows, you know, we're a general law city. A lot of things that we have ordinances for is because the state requires it. And the other thing is we have what we call the Open Meetings Act. If I talk to David, for instance, in regards to something, and I go over here and talk to Johnny, that's fine. But that's as far as it can go. He can't talk to David or he can't talk to Will or anybody else. Otherwise, it's a walk in quorum and we violated the law. The Open Meetings Act is helps us holds us to meeting, an open meeting like we have here. And that's where we discuss whatever it is that we have to talk about. We can't do it as a group without being at an open meeting.
With.
Just so y'all know.
With that in mind, I I think we we were doing pretty well before COVID hit with the frequency of town hall meetings. But I think maybe we should assess us as a as a work group and as a council if, you know, quarterly may not be much more productive to be able to get information out to the community and be able to pull in comments and concerns from the community in a more timely fashion.
Right. And and I totally agree. I think we need to move along. Jackie, there were some questions.
Yes, we have Marilyn Wolford at 447 Elaine Drive. And it says, I have the same issue with my with my problem. Two of my neighbors have things on my property, fence, carport, trailer. Says she can't afford to address it because of a new survey being required. Said she had a survey done in 2018 when she purchased her prop- property.
Okay, I think that's something that we can that probably code enforcement can address with her. You can contact her later.
And then we also had Vance Townsend and says, is it a perceived conflict of interest to have husband and wives on the boards of both organizations in Ivanhoe? Does the city attorney have an opinion?
I don't think that's been an issue. It never has come up as an issue before.
He's asked that several times.
Yeah, I think the city attorney's not present and it's not the topic that we're actually talking about at the moment.
And that's a dead issue.
Yeah. Uh, any any other questions pertaining to this? Let's move along. Uh, I I think we've talked about ordinances and deed restrictions quite a bit. Uh, grant funding procedures and I just want people to, there's been a lot of confusion. I've seen people say on on the internet, well, we got $22 million. I don't see anything happen. We did not get $22 million. They do not hand you $22 million. What they do is is they dole it out as work is done. Uh, we and and we have maps out here of the the proposed or the grants that have been awarded and what work is is intended to be done with that. Uh, somebody said something about we had no plan. Oh, it's very specific about what we can do with that grant money. And so I invite people to look at those maps. Uh, and we have another grant that's not on there yet that we've gotten. But uh, just so people understand, you do not get the money. They dole it out as work is done. We have spent, uh, I think around $600,000 in the 11 and a half million dollar grant. And that is billed. And that has gone to engineering, to surveying, to all these different things. And as as invoices are submitted, we submit it to GLO. And then they send us the money and within three days, we have to write a check and send that money out. So those accounts that we have are absolutely just passed through accounts. It's for them to send the funding as the invoices come in and then the money sent out. Government is slow. We don't, somebody made a comment about with $22 million, we ought to be better, we ought to be able to create a city better than Woodville. You know, that that's not a reality. What what's going on is we have, we have to do everything according to to the schedule that we are given. I mean, we have, we have everything right now in environmentals, pretty much. Uh, once they've done the surveying and all that sort of thing, it's turned over to environmentals. They have to check and make sure that everything is okay as far as moving forward. I don't know if people understand or realize that like with that Texas Water Development Board project when we put that new bridge in, it got hung up in environmentals for over six months. And they finally determined that that land along there where the old, under where the old dam was, was a wetland. The original plan with that was to put pads so that we could detour right around that project. And because it was wetlands, you can't put pads on there. And we had to do a detour, a horrible detour. I mean, we all, but David did a fantastic job in creating a detour. But those are the things that happen. And and so we have to comply with every little detail that the government requires. And that's where things stand right now. They're environmentals. So we'll we'll keep letting people or informing people of the status of our grants. Right now, we just got the survey uh, from the engineers as far as the lake up front. And that Marion, please, I need to give you all that paperwork about the meets and bounds for that for that lake and and what's going with that project.
Don't the grant writers apply for these grants for us?
They, yes, the application is made and submitted by a grant administrator, a grant, yeah.
And then council votes on it.
Mm-hmm, about moving forward with the grant application. Now, what when an award is, when we're given an award, we can say, no, we don't want it.
Right.
But and that's a decision council makes, too.
So it's a team effort to get these grants?
Absolutely.
It's just not one person. It's all of us together.
Oh, absolutely. Every step of the way. And and so again, if people have questions, please feel free to ask those questions. There's not a dumb question. Let's understand how all this works. Uh, you know, it's that's important. Communication is important. And we're always here to answer questions. Uh, anything else concerning the grants?
Uh, anything else concerning the grants?
Oh, ooh. Echo, echo, echo. Was there anything else, Jackie, as far as?
I don't know it.
Was there anything else, Jackie?
We've got, we lost you, too.
Oh.
We're trying to get it fixed.
Okay.
249 Sherwood Forest Drive North. Um, is there any, the on the map, Lakewood's not included. Do we have money for Lakewood? Is there a grant coming just for Lakewood or?
Um.
And I'm talking probably from the tree down.
What we were talking about was.
It's at 1.9.
1.9.
Yeah, that 1.9 million that we're getting. And I was trying to think, I I know we had Lakewood in mind. And that's not on that map yet. We're getting 1.9 million through that's last tranche of money from Harvey. And we are dedicating that to Lakewood.
But I thought Lakewood was originally on the map when we voted in the 2 million.
It it was.
Yes, it was.
Bond bond funds did not stretch out as far as we had anticipated.
2 million is gone?
No, it's not completely gone and it's still being used in this next construction season. But the projects that we had had worked through on the original map wound up costing in in many cases, like, you know, right off the bat with Shanna Clear. Um, when they went out and took core samples, they, you know, discovered right away that we were going to have to have much more expense on that little stretcher road just to have adequate base. And so.
So what is the plan for Lakewood?
We are dedicating that 1.9 million, 1, 1,933,000 dollars to Lakewood.
And how far will that go?
We don't know.
Where are you going to start?
We're going to start at the tree.
Well, then it won't make it all the way down to the dam, probably.
Probably not.
We're going to go as far as we can.
The dam is going to be in place.
No, no, we're talking about the Tulane Tulane Dam.
Right.
Camelot, right?
No.
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 I'm on Lakewood, uh, between Tana Claire and and Galahad.
I'm not an engineer, nor do I have the budgetary knowledge to say this. But from our historical work, I personally don't see any reason why we're not going to make it to Galahad Dam. I I would actually foresee that we, you know, because we've, we've got other grant funds that will impact some stretches of Lakewood as far as the drainage reconstruction and whatnot. So um, I think there's going to be some overlap there. I I'm personally hopeful that we'll be able to make it all the way back to Camelot. But that will be up to the engineers and bids at the point in time in which the work is actually done.
So out of that 2 million, has any of it been used other places than what we voted on it to be used as?
From the original map?
Yes, from the original map.
I think.
Well, we've done the Shanna Clear and Charmaine South, right?
Shanna Clear, Charmaine South.
That's all we.
We're going to use it, uh, 28.
We're not going to, that we're going to have to go after bids on that.
If it went to the back, that's fine.
There wasn't enough.
If it went to the back, that's fine.
We we have like 390,000 left at this point.
Lakewood is just tearing up our cars terribly, terribly.
We know. And and look at this, you know, this is interesting because we're talking about 1.9, 1,933,000 dollars and hopefully being able to do Lakewood. That's how much costs have changed. When we did that 2 million dollar bond, we thought we could do miracles with that. And it the costs have gone sky high. And hopefully with this 2 million dollars that we're getting now, we're going to just be able to do Lakewood. And and we have our fingers crossed on that one. We do we know exactly how far we can go? No, we have to get the engineers to actually come in and say, okay, this is what it's going to cost.
So when is that project in place?
Well, the the funding, they just had a kickoff meeting recently with the GLO people as far as that money is concerned. So it's just in the initial stages.
Okay.
But uh, that's that's what we're dedicating that money for. And thank you for bringing that out.
We don't, we have the 355,000 for 22nd Street.
That is 375,000 dollars that we just got. We just got word that that's that's happening. And that's supposed to do all of 22nd Street back in the back.
Good.
The other challenge, the other challenge with Lakewood is that because of the 11 million dollar grant and the reconstruction of Camelot Dam, um, we don't want to lay down a fresh surface and then have to bring in excavation and heavy equipment and destroy that new asset. So.
You got to go down Tana Clear.
Well, there's the other thing, too, is that the roads are going to be raised to the level of the dam. And we don't want to put down new roads that's going to be torn up to be raised.
Yeah, so it's it's a.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
That is the first project.
But yeah, that's that's what that money is dedicated toward. Any other questions about grants or grant funding? Again, moving right along, home businesses, that's been a question. Are we going to go and close down home businesses? Home businesses are a thing of today. It, you know, and I think part of that is the whole COVID thing. Everything is changing. Uh, we do have some home businesses operating here. Uh, we have not, we don't really have ordinances in place that that address this. This is, again, we're going to have to work on ordinances, looking at every aspect. But again, we're not going to go and be closing somebody down right now. What we're working on is how can we make this work for everybody? At least that's my opinion. We, again, we have to address ordinances, figure out what we're going to do.
Yeah, there's a difference between a cottage business and a commercial or industrial endeavor.
Absolutely. And and, you know, we have to look at how does it affect the neighborhood? There's all kinds of things that that are involved in those home businesses.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's what this is about.
On the Airbnb's.
And your name, ma'am?
We haven't got.
Galen Musney. On the Airbnb's.
Where do you live?
There's.
Ma'am.
I don't know. I'll put, I'll be outside in a minute.
Ms. Galen, it it Ms. Galen, if you can hold for one second, are we done with the home businesses yet?
I guess so. She's, uh.
Well, I'm just asking so we can move on if so. Is there anything else on on home businesses online? That's the item that we're on at the moment. She said Airbnb.
Well, that's home businesses, isn't it?
Well, the next thing on the agenda is Airbnbs.
Okay, well, let's go to home businesses.
Okay.
If they bring in, if if they're not bothering anybody, are you talking about like running a business out of your home? Okay, if they're not bothering anybody, I don't see anything wrong with it. It's bringing in taxes for the city. It's saving them from driving to a place renting a building to run a business. And it's benefiting Ivanhoe.
Right.
I have one, I guess, a couple of streets over. Don't even know it's there.
Right.
So no complaints on that. And I just think we should allow it if they follow the rules.
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's what we're here for, to to voice our opinions about stuff. And that's great.
I think he was for home business.
Uh, I think, Peter, did you have something to say about this?
Yeah, hi, I'm Peter Pack, uh, 23rd Street. As far as what Galen just pointed out, it brings in tax money to the city. Um, I'm confused about that. In what ways it bring in tax money to the city if I have a home business?
Sales tax.
If you're selling something, if you have a product to sell, it'll bring in.
If it's a service and there's no tax being charged.
No.
Then it doesn't.
Services are charged tax.
If you don't charge the taxes, because I mean, I don't know of anybody, if it, in a service industry that I was in, I don't know of anybody that paid sales tax on the services they provided. Not one. So it.
Was that business to business or?
No, no, no.
Consumer.
Consumer to business. So, you know, I mean.
And and this raises.
Oh, you ran out of gas?
I'm out of juice. I do. I do talk a lot. This this raises a good point. Um, as as the mayor mentioned, this is the way that that things are going. And it's for our community, it's relatively new. We have had a few home. We have had a few home-based businesses for many years, but with COVID and having broadband service out here, it's being more and more prevalent, it's, there's more and more people engaging in business from their homes, working from homes, telecommuting, and this is a new layer of ordinances that, again, we're gonna have to, to make sure that we have policy in place that makes good sense. These are issues that we haven't had to address as a community in the long run.
Well, the, the reason I bring this up, you're gonna open a can of worms, I don't know if you wanna go down the street, and, and here's a reason why. If you're selling something online, and you're, are you gonna charge taxes on what they sold online? Because that's a home business.
State does.
Okay, the state comptroller handles that, and that's all in question right now.
Yeah, that's, unfortunately, that's in flux.
That's the home business, isn't it?
Right.
You know, so, how are you gonna define what is considered a home business? And, you know, if the home business is not charging sales tax, you know, then what part of that business does the city have?
And, and, and that's why I say, we're gonna have to take a look at different classifications of home-based businesses, service versus retail product, whether or not it's an internet-based, whether or not there's high traffic, whether or not it's something that people come to the home to actually get their goods or services from. These are all gonna be different components that are gonna have to be evaluated, and will likely wind up with different classes of home-based businesses, because there's some that have zero impact functionally on the community, but if somebody was, you know, running some kinda shop where there were fifty or a hundred cars a day coming through, well, that's a commercial enterprise, and that needs more regulation to make sure that the, you know, neighborhood is, is being looked after. But, again, these are considerations that, because of the new way of doing business, and because it's becoming more prevalent in the community, we're gonna have to dive into this and start assessing what we currently have on the books and what we need to have on the books.
So, so then, if someone is in business, let's say a home business of some sort, okay? Before anything goes to vote, someone pointed out that there's no communication here. So, once it's voted, it's done, we don't have a, have a say-so.
I think an excellent idea will be, you know, having the sign up front at least gives some opportunity for us to broadcast to the community, and always, there's the, the sign up that says council meeting on the thirtieth, or whatever it may be. I'm, I'm personally very interested in pushing more information out to the community and drawing the community in so that they can gather more information. Coming to city council meetings, really, the, the bulk of everything happens at the council meetings, and so, if people aren't coming to those or aren't watching them online, we can't drag people in here, we can't force people in here, the most that we can do is, is give people a notification that, you know, decisions are, as they are every month, being made. Please come in and, you know, be aware of, of what's going on in your community.
And one thing, public communication is the first thing on the agenda of every city council meeting. The agendas are posted seventy-two hours prior to a meeting, at least seventy-two hours, and ours are usually more than that. We invite people to come up and to voice an opinion on anything that's on the agenda in the beginning of the meeting. We can't necessarily go back and forth and converse and answer those questions, but we encourage people to give their input for anything that's on the agenda. The other thing is, we, I've asked people, I always ask for public opinion or public comments on the internet. A lot of people are not coming to, to council meetings, but they're watching us online. So, you can submit questions or comments online. We really invite the input, we, we want it. And what I'm seeing, now, what David mentioned a while ago, we used to do town hall meetings on a regular basis, and we, because of COVID, they just, it just stopped. And now, we need to get back in the swing of having town hall meetings periodically so that we're not sitting here for three hours, we can handle it in a couple. But, right now, there's just a lot of stuff on the agenda because we haven't been able to get together, and we really are looking for your input, and we're looking for clarification about all of these issues that we've, we've had come up. I, sorry to interrupt, Peter, but I kinda felt like I...
Well, and that's just it, I mean, there's, the term home business, I mean, it's part of the private business sector. So, if, I mean, you're gonna put a regulation on it, the cost of regulation is high, and I'm afraid of enforce, I mean, that's, this whole meeting's been about that. And, and so, I'm just wondering, I mean, like, if, let's say, I wanna start a knitting business and be able to sell, sell quilts, okay? If I sell that quilt to, to Bob for whatever amount of dollars, are you gonna come after me for sales tax?
State does that.
Yeah, the state does that, that's right, but it's bad enough that I have to pay state ta, uh, sales tax. Am I gonna have to pay a city sales tax for that? And how are you gonna prove that I did that? If I sell it outside of, outside of Ivanhoe, if I was able to sell it to a guy that lives in, in Jasper, okay? And I delivered it to him, am I still gonna be paying, you know, you're gonna ask me to pay sales pa, uh, sales tax?
Peter, we, we don't have answers for these questions. Again, this is, this is an emerging situation that is growing exponentially every day. Every, you know, in the last year, I'm sure that there's probably been a half a dozen people out here that decided that they wanted to work from home and start something up. And so, as this is an emerging issue, we don't have the policy in place, and we don't have these answers. So, what's gonna be required is open discussion about this so that we can formulate a strategy on how to manage it. So, all the questions that you're asking are great questions that, that need discussion, and there will be discussion about them, but as far as answers about home-based businesses, it's kinda like the campers, it's a discussion that's in process, and we, we really don't have the answers today.
Then, when will you be talking about such things where we can put in input before it goes to a vote and becomes part of the ordinance issue?
Okay, we have a speaker?
I, I think, I think probably, to, to your question directly, C.D., would you add a note for an agenda item on the next council meeting to discuss action, actionable, or... We, we gotta go through the list of the things that we've talked about today and set up a strategy for how to actually take some action to move these conversations forward. These bullet points that we've gone through in today's meeting are gonna need further clarification and further discussion, and so, what I would say is that at the next city council meeting, we need to start putting some dates and some timeframes on when we open these conversations and start making movement on them, because the, the challenges are not going away, they're just stacking up on us.
Yeah.
And so, we're gonna have to start delegating some time and resource to actually chewing through them. So, that doesn't necessarily answer your question as to when, but what I can say is, the conversation will be opened up at the next council meeting.
But, when meaning, am I gonna be able to question and ask more questions on that?
Right. Okay.
Before it goes to a vote and becomes an ordinance?
Okay.
Absolutely.
What I'm, what is occurring to me that would be a good idea is, we can put, we have a city Facebook page and put out there, we are going to be looking at this, and we'd like public input, so that in writing...
It's a great idea.
You could submit, you know, your opinion, your ideas, whatever.
And questions.
And we need, and we need that, and we want, make us, help us make a better decision that we don't, that we can research it and make a decision that fits the whole community.
Right.
We gotta slow that process down.
There are nine city Facebook pages, which one's the official?
No, no, there's, there's only, there is only one city Facebook page. Those are other, others are individuals that have put things out there, but there's only one city Facebook page.
City of Ivanhoe?
Yeah.
It's not the Land O' Lakes or something?
No, none of that is official, the, there's only one.
One city website.
Mm-hmm, well, it's a Facebook page, we do have a website also. But I think people seem to like Facebook, so we can put out there on Facebook, this is what we're gonna be looking at, we'd love public input, because it's important for us to get that input before we make decisions. I think this is, this is really something that's...
We, we don't have all the answers, nor do we know all the questions. We don't, we don't try to, nor do we want to attempt to do this on our own. We rely on input and questions from the community to make sure that we're asking all the right questions, and to make sure that we have as much information as possible to make those decisions with. You know, historically, we haven't been set up for push communications, you know, Facebook seems to be one of the go-to pathways for that these days, and maybe that's something that we start leaning into this next season, is pushing more data directly as far as, informatively. In the past, it's been kind of a questionable, you know, deal because of freedom of information and record-keeping and all of those different things, but communication is, is definitely something that's high on the priority list of how to address this next year. And so, to that, to that point, you know, I think we're gonna try and find a way to alert the community when, anytime an ordinance is up for, you know, vote, it's something that the community needs to know about and needs to have the ability to put input in on.
And I think even before it comes up for vote, when the issue become, comes to the table, I think that's when we need to ask people's input.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay. Are we good?
Thank you.
Okay, we've got, come on up.
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name is Laurie Seames, I live at seven sixty Ivanhoe Ranchats. My question is, what happened to the ordinances for small home businesses? What happened to the ordinance for home-based businesses? Okay, and the reason I'm asking that is because I was not only a member, but the chairman of the P&amp;Z, and I wrote them.
John?
I have to look into that.
Johnny? Johnny, you were on the P&amp;Z?
Yeah, and I remember that, and, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I need to research to see if it is still in there, and if it is, we may already start the wheel, and we just need to fine-tune the wheel.
I wrote them, I mean, it was hours of research, what was considered a home-based business, if they had hours, if they had traffic, all of that, that's been done for years, okay? Number two, I have a home-based business in Ivanhoe, and yes, if you sell something, you have to pay taxes. I pay taxes to the state, to Woodville, and to the city of Ivanhoe, that's just the way it is. If we have so many new people wanting to start businesses, maybe we need to reinvestigate it. But, the ordinances are there, and if they're not, that's a question. I'd like to take one step backward to the code enforcement while I'm here. Don't, I heard you. We have money, we have money, right? Forty thousand? Why don't we take some of that money and get this young lady certified to prevent all the hoop law that went on in this community two months ago? That's all it takes. If she's an officer, then she's an officer, and then there's no who said this and who said that and who can't write a citation. It would've taken a lot of stress out of the city and off of Jackie. That's all I've gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Would you like to make any comment on that, or should we just let it go?
Council's authorized.
We've authorized her to...
Yeah, we, we authorized that expenditure quite some time ago.
I don't know why she hadn't got it yet, but... It takes, it takes a year to get it, I think, and it...
Well...
To training, I know.
Yeah, see...
And it's forty hours a week that you have to work under that person.
I know.
So, and there's no one, like, right here in this area, so...
I knew that, I mean, I was picking on you.
Right, but, yeah, that, that expenditure, expenditure has been approved, and we have had difficulty finding anyone that she could mentor under, and that's a requirement. Would you like to?
I'm waiting for that conversation to draw to a close.
Next.
My name is Justin Gregory, I also live at seven six zero Ivanhoe Ranchats Drive. I am a multiple home-based business owner, and Johnny, if you need a, a copy of the ordinance and dated, signed, and all that, when it went into effect, I'll be happy to provide it for you. I do have a copy for that, or should I say a copy of that? Because I based my businesses on that ordinance to ensure that I was compliant. And to address Peter's concern, and, and please correct me if I misunderstood, I think what the gentleman was asking is, is the city going to levy an additional business tax or an additional ordinance and restrictions on home-based businesses? Am I right in that understanding?
Well, I'm saying, if I babysit your kid, you pay me twenty dollars...
Then I feel so sorry for you.
And if I babysit your kid, and you're gone for three hours, and I charge you twenty dollars and I give sixty dollars a day, how much of that's gonna now go to the city?
That will be administered by the Secretary of State, you'll pay your sales tax, there are sales tax on goods and services regardless of location.
That's what I'm saying, if they're gonna levy new taxes from the city...
That, that is already in place, sales tax has been in place.
Yeah, that, that, basically, the city gets what trickles down to them once you pay your sales tax to the state. It's nothing more than...
I'm not paying a separate sales tax.
No, 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 not unless they decide to levy one and consider...
No, you can't, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, no, 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 no. There's a state law, the maximum sales tax is eight point two five.
Yes, as a business owner, I'm aware of that, I also wasn't finished saying what I was saying.
But we couldn't levy something over and above that, no, 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 no.
Which is exactly where I was going until I was interrupted, but thank you for that clarification, Mayor. With that said, I'll provide you that ordinance, Johnny, and have a good night.
Thanks, Justin, appreciate it. Right, and, and the way this is, the way it's structured right now, Ivanhoe gets one and a half percent of that eight, eight point two five percent sales tax. The county gets half a percent, there's, there's two percent that, that can be in play, and the county gets a half, and we get one and a half. All right, moving along to Airbnbs, I did get one communication, one email from Connie Hodges. She said, my name is Connie Hodges, four fifty-six Sherwood Forest Drive North. I am unable to attend the town hall meeting, but I do want to share my opinion on one of the agenda items, that particular item, Airbnb. It is a sore spot for me, we purchased our home four years ago, and for some reason, we're under the impression these short-term rentals were not allowed. This was music to my ears because we moved from a ninety percent Airbnb neighborhood, Crystal Beach. I spent my weekends listening to loud music and bad karaoke, picking up trash that was thrown in my yard, telling people that the yard that they were using as their golf cart ATV driveway was in fact my property and not that of the rental. I do not want to do that every weekend or at all. It became difficult for very few, for the very few of us that were full-time, full-timers to have our voices heard, because as long as there was money to be made, the rules didn't, didn't apply. I am totally against these short-term rentals here in Ivanhoe. And that was interesting to me, never had thought about it that way. We, again, we do not have an ordinance that says you can't have an Airbnb, we don't have one that says you can. That's another thing that we're gonna have to look at, it's happening. What I have seen as far as the Airbnbs that are functioning here in Ivanhoe is everybody that has one is improved property. They have made them look beautiful, we have not had problems with noisy people coming in or destructive people. It's been, to me, an asset to the community to have these things. But, like I say, we don't have an ordinance that says you can't, we don't have an ordinance that says you can, and it's probably one of those things that we have to look at again. Now, this brings to mind that maybe there needs to be some sort of regulations, okay? After a certain hour at night, you don't, you know, the noise control, we do have an ordinance regarding noise control after certain times of night. It has not been an issue so far, thank God, but it's interesting to have somebody bring up these things, because then you get to look at different points of view.
It looks like they would follow the same...
Procedure anymore?
As what the city...
Oh, we've had, we've had issues with...
Because I think I live in Crystal Beach.
Well, I was gonna say, I have heard, we have weekend people that own their homes, they come up on weekends, and you can hear them all the way across the road, across the lake up until two, three o'clock in the morning, and they own their property.
Okay.
We have not had that problem with Airbnb rentals.
It's my understanding that you cannot collect taxes from them, because it has to go into a, what is, tourism account?
Okay.
Couldn't we do something to create a tourism account?
Well, what we have to do, we have to look at that, we researched it, I think even Will did some research on that. What, what it is, it's a hotel motel tax that you put on... Will did some research on that. What it is, it's a hotel motel tax that you put on Airbnbs or short-term rentals. And that money has to be spent toward tourism. So, you can collect it, you have to make sure that you spend it as a community on things that promote tourism. That's the idea of the hotel motel.
So, if we were to have some kind of a festival?
Yeah.
We could use that money?
Probably.
Okay. So, that would be something to look at for Airbnb?
Now, this is something, this is something that is not collected by Airbnb. It's not collected by the state. It's something that the city would have to collect, take, you know, collect itself. It's not something that anybody else handles.
Well, I'm not speaking for any Airbnb people, but I do know that that does help them pay their taxes.
Oh, absolutely.
And the taxes are getting so high, we've got to do something to supplement the income that's not coming up.
I've got a guest, I've got a guest house that I seriously consider doing Airbnb.
I'm seriously thinking about doing it to my home.
There you go.
I'm serious, because I'm about ready to get out of here.
Well, I get it.
But I don't want to let go of my house.
Right, right. I, no, I totally agree. And in fact, when, in fact, when, in fact, when I, no, when I, when I built my guest house, this was back when I was, you know, recently widowed, and I thought, okay, this could be a source of income for me.
Well, our taxes are higher than our farm ones.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And we have almost two hundred acres and two homes.
I know, I know.
And, I mean, it's just not worth it anymore. It's not worth it.
I hear you. Thank you, Galen. Appreciate it. Any other discussion or questions about Airbnbs?
Okay. Hi, Colleen on 23rd Street. I just want to make a comment about your letter. I just want to make a comment about the email. We, my husband and I actually, we'd never had Airbnb, but we did do VRBO. And I can tell you, I mean, her, her comment is about Crystal Beach. It is a far different community than here. Every single one of our guests came here for the peace and quiet.
Right, exactly. And that, and that's, and I think that's what we stress here, come in and have a quiet weekend on the lake. We have not had any problems like that, and I know what Crystal Beach is. Most of the people down there rent their properties out all the time, except for when they go down there themselves for a weekend. So it's, it's become a huge rental community. Anyone else? Did you have, we have online question?
I think it's more of a statements, but S.J. Abke said, "For Airbnb, we're missing tax opportunities for revenue. That hotel tax helps, helps support events." It says, "People will need a place to stay for events that the city funds."
Right. So, thank you. Thank you for the input. Like I say, we have done some research on it, and if we feel that it gets to the point where we can, it's feasible to collect that. Skip, would you?
David, I have a question for you. I'm red here.
Oh, you're red?
Thanks. I have a quick question for you, and you don't have to take much time to do it, but you've been here for a while, and you made mention earlier about all the things that used to be done in the community. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, you know, a lot of it really is from my childhood, you know. I remember there was square dancing here, I believe, on Thursday nights, and it was a real thing for members of the community to come and square dance. You know, we didn't have a big Fourth of July celebration with fireworks quite like we do now, which is a massive improvement, but Halloween and Christmas and Easter and everything, this community center, which used to be wide open, and it was just a pavilion, it was filled with members of the community. We had a dunking booth and barbecue and all kinds of stuff, and it was, it was a real hub of interaction for neighbors to come. It was like a block party, you know, and we, it was, you know, half a dozen times a year or more. Are you talking specifically about events and activities?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think it was just, there'd be face painting and activities for kids, and there was always something going on, depending on the season, where people just got together and enjoyed, you know, hanging out with their neighbors and doing stuff. And it was, you know, generated money for the civic club and different associations. And there was, I will say that there was a much stronger sense of community and family and neighborhood back in those days. I don't know if it was just, you know, the times or a reflection on how the community was set up at that point, but there was lots of activity, lots and lots of volunteer effort from a younger generation, I think, as well. You know, the, the middle-aged folks that were out here, I think, had a lot more engagement in those types of activities and things like that, but...
Well, I think one of the things you brought up about the age thing, I've heard stories about people that were out there, out here from the beginning, and how they'd get together on weekends and play music and dance and do whatever. And, you know, I look at, you know, a bunch of young people, they're all excited about building their weekend houses, or most, most of them were weekend houses that people were building. And the enthusiasm, and they all, they had kids, and let's all get together, and let's all do this. Our demographics have changed tremendously. But I think, you know, we can, we can create activities. We have some activities that we've, you know, we've created. Our Christmas Boat Parade, which includes, you know, Santa Claus, the whole thing, Fourth of July, we haven't looked at them necessarily as fundraisers, but they certainly could grow into festivities that, our Boat Parade definitely brings in people from other communities. Our Fourth of July fireworks brings in people from different communities. And trunk-or-treat, that's, that's always been huge. And we haven't looked at them as fundraisers, but, you know, we can look at that aspect, too. And Seren Will mentioned one time, some time ago, about like Fourth of July, making it an all-day activity and having food trucks and whatever. We, there's so much, yeah, dunking booths, there's so much we can do. So, again, let's, let's get...
Thank you for the insight and the history lesson.
Absolutely, Skip. Thank you.
Okay, anything else that anyone has to comment? Oh, Ser, I didn't see you. Come on up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Karen Giesi. We're at 369 23rd Street. We're building, building a home there. One suggestion I had when you're talking about activities, we're down in Pearland right now, and we have a church that every year, they buy a bulk of pumpkins, and they put them out, and they charge like six, seven times what you'd pay for at HEB, you know, but the kids can kind of go through and everything. That would probably be a really good way to bring in some income, you know, and get people noticing the area. And then the second thing I wanted to suggest is maybe a newsletter, like a monthly newsletter to the community that might help with communication.
We used to have one.
Oh, did you?
I did, but nobody wanted to do it.
Well, and the thing of today is kind of, you know, it's on social media, Facebook, but yeah...
Well, you, yeah, that's what you could do, is you could do the newsletter, and you could, you know, mass email it to everybody. It's not something you'd have to do on paper.
Not anymore.
Yeah, but, you know, it's a good way to communicate and let everybody know, you know, what's going on or what's coming up.
That's a good thing. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Peter?
A while back, I almost hit a kid on a bicycle, because he was riding towards me on this side of the road while I was going towards them. And I saw a bunch of kids two days ago riding on the wrong side of the road. And it, I kind of asked myself, you know, is there a way to like suggest some kind of a safety measure, or, you know, some kind of a education program or something, or something like that for that?
I think that's a great suggestion for maybe the law enforcement department. You know, I was talking with one of the marshals this last year about different types of educational programs for youth, for, you know, just residents in general, as far as being aware of community safety, health and safety, CPR classes. I think, you know, education is, knowledge is power, but, you know, it also just keeps people safer. So I think that looking at programs like that in the community is something that we really should think about in terms of how we educate each other and how we educate the community. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. So, just, just wanted to say, because I mean, it seems like either kids just, they thought they were supposed to ride on that side of the street, or I don't know.
Well, and we have the same situation on, we have the same situation on the lakes, you know, on Charmaine. We actually operate opposite standard nautical procedure, where drivers pass on the same side of the boat, driver to driver. But we operate in a counterclockwise measure, like you're driving on the street. And I, I am constantly, every summer, flagging folks down and saying, hey, glad to see you're having a good time, just wanted to let you know, we're, we're right-hand only, so that they're not coming into oncoming traffic around some of these blind corners. It's just a situation of educating people as to what our practices are out here, or what, you know, state or local guidelines are for different practices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Anything else? Jackie, was this?
We have S.J. Abke saying that we have no codes for the Airbnb, and they're asking that we consider having such, again, it goes back to, back into events, as the mayor stated.
Right. Right. That's something that, you know, again, something to look at, as things become apparent to us. All right. Anything else?
Yes, how about those Astros?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and how about the hot dogs at the fire station? Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned at 12:33 PM.